Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I also have a pledge of allegiance and New Mexico pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, individual, with dignity and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, as the symbol of a perfect friendship among our United cultures.
Thank you, roll call please.
Hi, this is Nez.
Here.
Kevin Mitchell.
Here.
Priscilla Manilito.
Here.
Joe Menini.
Present.
Lynn Hineman.
I'm present and enjoying the decorations of the evening, thanks to whoever did it.
Thank you. We'll begin with our approval of agenda, board members.
Mr. President. All motions to approve?
Ms. Manilito approves, uh, motions to approve the agenda, roll call please.
Mr. Hineman?
Yes.
Mr. Menini?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Nez?
Yes. And... No public comments. We have no public comments this evening? We're gonna continue on to approval of the minutes, December 7, 2015, special meeting, board members.
Mr. President?
Mr. Hineman?
I move approval of the minutes of December 7, special meeting.
Mr. Hineman, uh, motions to approve the special meeting minutes for December 7, 2015, roll call please.
Mr. Menini?
Epstein.
Ms. Manilito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Epstein.
Mr. Nez?
Yes. Okay, uh, we do have now the December 7, 2015, regular meeting minutes, board members.
Uh, Mr. Nez, I have a question, sir.
Uh, Ms. Manilito.
Um... Under the, uh, Mr. Mitchell's, um, absence, is that an excuse?
Um, yes, it should be excused here. With that, do we have any other comments?
Mr. President?
Mr., uh, Menini?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting on December 7th be approved, as presented.
The motion for, by Mr. Menini to approve the regular minutes on December 7, 2015, by Mr. Menini, uh, roll call please.
Mr. Hineman?
Yes.
Ms. Manilito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Epstein.
Mr. Nez?
Yes. Okay, board members, with that, we'll continue on to the approval of consent agenda items. Board members.
Uh, Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Hineman?
I have a couple of questions on the, uh, transfers, do you want me to ask those now, or wait till there's a motion? Sometimes when we get reports ahead of the meetings, I've had opportunity to get my question answered, you know, from the business office beforehand, which might be more fair in terms of knowing what all these things are, but I didn't get to on this one, and a, a couple of these things are real general, and I find it more helpful, there are a couple times where it says like, for purchase of computers in the reports, but there's one on this report, it says, purchase technology for classrooms, technology is a broad term to me, it could be computers, that's what we think of nowadays, but it could be shop equipment, it could, you know, so I'm just wondering, this whole, whole list, it is, uh, only one item is fairly large in dollars, some are small, but I'm wondering if that's basically computers, or is it something else, just to know.
President Nez, members of the board, Mr. Hineman, the transfer that you're talking about is the Church Rock transfer under the Title I funds for technology. Um, they are looking to purchase some classroom computers for direct instruction, all of those items will be used for direct instruction. They are a little bit nebulous right now, because they were still collecting some of their data, and it does take a little bit of time to get the money moved. Um, but they did have originally an FTE position, and that's kind of the transition between two separate administrators at that school site, and then upon further evaluation, transitioning into the necessary technology. So, again, it will likely be computers, or something of that nature, um, but they were still just a little unsure, but they did want to make sure the money was moved.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And another one is this list from Rema Elementary of additional compensation for working after hours on lesson plan and data analysis, and curious what that, because lesson planning, to me, teachers often do after hours and don't get compensated, but they don't always do data analysis. I know we have a day-to-day, or data day, some people would say, so I would like a little more.
Sure, and again, this is another school site where we, we have a new administrator in that position, so she's likely pulling her team together, getting them together, looking at the data that they have for their students, and making sure that they're mapping out the end of the year.
What makes that extra compensation base, as opposed to just something they would do? That's the part I don't quite understand.
So, it was something that the principal asked the teachers to come in, and specifically work with her, looking at something targeted. And so when a principal does that, they typically will use some of their supplemental funding in order to pay those teachers for their time.
If it's a requirement by the CBA, we do have to pay for it. If it's a teacher working in their classroom, staying afterwards on their own choice, that's, that's different, but since it was mandated, or asked to come on the benefit of the school as an organized group, by the CBA, we get out to pay.
And, and I will note too, that a lot of our supplemental funds are utilized in this way, for supplemental non-contract, to bring those educators in for some type of special targeted event. And, and again, I, I do know that teachers work very hard at all times, I don't suspect that they don't, but as Mr. Chappetti indicated, if the principal's specifically bringing them in for a targeted purpose, you will see non-contract pay.
Okay, thank you, answers my question.
I have one more question on that note, um, is that amount, um, for how many teachers?
So I wouldn't be able to answer that, I'm sorry, I probably could find that information out for you. Um, typically what we pay for our certified staff to come in is thirty dollars an hour, so it would depend on how many times they were actually gonna bring those individuals in, and for how many days. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, board members? Your wishes?
Mr. President?
Mr. Hineman?
I move approval of the consent items identified in the agenda.
There's a motion by Mr. Hineman to approve the consent agenda items listed, roll call please.
Mr. Menini?
Yes.
Ms. Manilito?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Nez?
Yes. Okay, with that, we go right into study circle, superintendent?
First up is recognition, so we'll turn it over to Terry Frazier.
Good evening, board president, board members, Terry Frazier, Public Relations. We put together a little short slideshow here for you, to show you what's been going around, going on around the district since we last were here giving recognitions, so I'd like to go through this real quickly, and then pass out our awards tonight. So, GMCS is part of Project Search, where, um, a group of students are interning out at the Hilton Garden Inn, gaining skills to someday be employed and be employable. Uh, they, they've gone a long way, they've been on TV with Barbara Stanley, having a good time there, getting interviewed and passing the word. Here we have lunch being prepared by one of the interns at Hilton Garden Inn. Here you can see, it's a bird, it's a plane, actually, this, it was Sky 7 coming in, and delivering coats for all our kids. That was a great event out at Church Rock Elementary. Okay, the clicker is just a little weird. Uh, the, uh, Red Rock Elementary students were out at Strawberry Canyon before it got too, too cold, taking a hike, and learning about all the, uh, plants, and different animals, and different areas out at McGaffey. Frank, if you could help me out, please, Mr. Chappetti, with the down, a down button on the computer. This doesn't seem to be functioning very well. We had seven Explorer events throughout the district, where science was brought in for students to share experiences with their, uh, parents, and so, uh, next. So we have explorers in our midst, next, and they brought the Star Lab in as well, uh, for children to learn more about the constellations, et cetera, next. Gallup Mid did what? Well, go ahead, next. Their sixth grade collected over a thousand pounds of food for the needy, and they'll be on our agenda tonight for, uh, recognition, so, next. We have Mrs. Sharon Penya and Ms. Sharon Terrilock from Gallup Mid, proud sixth grade sponsors after all the food was loaded into their truck, next. We have Mr. Gary Schuster, very proud of Mr. Gary Schuster, named New Mexico 5A Athletic Director of the Year, and he also received a distinguished service award from the New Mexico Activities Association, New Mexico Athletic Directors Association. So Gary's very happy with that, and we are as well, thank you. We have a financial literacy program going on at Gallup Central High School, where, um, Arnold Bloom and Sean Spruce were giving away end of the semester awards for the, uh, students who are grad students, who had the largest savings accounts, they're learning how to, uh, manage their money, they have a savings a, and a checking account, next. This is Sean Spruce, and, uh, some of the winners as well, next. We had arts and crafts fairs throughout the district, several of them, next. Next, oh, just a photo there, next. We had carolers throughout the district, many, many carolers, next. This was at a Christmas concert for the middle school, next. We had drummers, these are the steel drummers, uh, steel drum, uh, artists, I guess you'd call them, from Church Rock Elementary, they toured around the district as well, this was the concert at their school, for their assembly. We had many Santa clauses there, as well, a lot of kids in a lot of good spirits throughout the, uh, district. We had concerts, band concerts, next. Next. We had reindeer, plenty of reindeer, also like to, you know, uh, let you know that as of the last board meeting, thanks to a couple of the zone directors, by the next day, we have the turkeys taken down and Christmas decorated for you here in the boardroom, next. We had more reindeer. There were reindeer throughout Gallup last week, many sightings, next. And we were all involved, there, we had many, uh, pictures throughout our, our, uh, catalog, I guess you would call it, of whole groups of kids, which is a beautiful thing to see, next. And then there were our talented staff members, teachers, and even a board member up there dancing, and giving their concert. Mr. Hineman was very involved, next, and here's some of our, uh, teachers throughout the district, uh, that's Vern Bio, who's an administrator at Gallup Mid, showing off their musical talents, and they had their own Christmas concert at Kennedy Middle School, next. So even Navajo Nation Vice President Nez was in our school district, he actually visited three schools throughout GMCS, next. He talked with students, and, uh, shared the, um, in, in several cases, sa, uh, shared the message of, uh, non, non-bullying and violence, and here he was at Gallup Middle School, part of another presentation, next. And what about that Niles Thomas, New Mexico cross-country champion, from Wyomira High School, next. Great job, Niles, and he too was on the Barbara Stanley Show. Very exciting for the students to be on the television program, and I think Barb herself has a lot more fun with students than adults, and that'll be our focus moving forward, next. And we have an apple, Golden Apple winner as well throughout our district, Viola Hosky, one of seven winners throughout the state, next, and she too became a star on the Barbara Stanley Show, next. Right out back, one morning, we found a bunch of balloons, uh, flying during the balloon rally, next. And the Church Rock players stopped by, uh, the student support center there, we have three camels and a, another puppet. The children did a wonderful, wonderful job with their presentation for us here at Central Office, next. And this was the woodwind section of the Church Rock players on their recorders, next. Also, that same day at the, uh, at Central Office, we had an ugly sweater contest, we had ugly, a lot of ugly sweaters, like really ugly sweaters, and we had lunch and fun, and that was, uh, all held here in the boardroom, it was a great time for us to all get together here in the building, next. We even had the Grinch, this was a piece of artwork donated for our party, uh, by Danica Cortez, who goes to school next door at Wyomira, we wanted to capture that, next. So you see these children are celebrating, and it's what you do when you earn an A. And these children are from Indian Hills Elementary, where we went and helped them celebrate, next. And celebrate, you see board member Menini and board member Nez, with Superintendent Chappetti, celebrating, and, and we celebrate some more. The kids were very excited, so, um, it was good to see that with the children, next. And as we've all read in the newspaper over the weekend, GMCS makes the grade, this were some of the, uh, administrators that attended the, uh, press conference and the, uh, announcement at Indian Hills, and, next. So this is our children waving goodbye, and, next, saying, see you next year, happy holidays, thank you. So as we mentioned before, Gallup Middle School had a sixth grade food, uh, food drive, under the direction of Sharon Penya and Sharon Terrilock, the two Sharon's, uh, at this time, we'd like to, uh, recognize the students for collecting over a thousand pounds of food, that's a lot of food, and, um, they donated it all to the community pantry, so if we could give the Gallup Mid students a round of applause, for those of you who are here in the audience. I'd like to call up Principal Carrie Lovato up here, please. So I'd like to call up Nora Rashid. James Lalewi. Emmanuel Smiley. Kaia Tempest. And Sidney Hammer. We'd also like to recognize Elizabeth Lawrence. She's another sixth grade teacher up at Gallup Middle School, come on up. Thank you, Mrs. Lawrence, if you would shake the board's hand, please. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have two people to be recognized, who have combined seventy and a half years of experience in teaching. We have two retirees this round, um, and we will start recognizing our retirees by the board meeting. I'd like to first call up with thirty and a half years of experience, Ms. Emily Kaisley. The first time I was introduced to the next recipient, I was just introduced to Coach Torres, and that was down in Zuni, when we were both teacher, teachers there, and since then, Robert has amassed quite a, a repertoire for his coaching cross-country, and at this time, I'd like to recognize Robert Torres. For forty years of service to education, he's been with us, lucky enough, for four years, so, thank you. Okay, I'd like to call Principal Craig Robinson up at this time, please. Mr. Robinson is the principal at Tohachi High School. So we have a lot of recipients from Tohachi High this time around, and we're gonna start off with the girls volleyball players, um, under head coach Edwin Brown, is Edwin here tonight? Oh, he couldn't make it, okay, so first off, Navajo Nation All-Star Northern Volleyball Team, a nominee, I'd like to call up Cheyenne Begay. New Mexico All-Star Volleyball Team, Navajo Nation All-Star Northern Volleyball Team nominee, had a hundred and thirty-nine aces, highest according to Max Preps for Class AAA, we'd like to call up Kebab Itzoy. New Mexico All-Star Volleyball Team, Navajo Nation All-Star Northern Volleyball Team nominee, two hundred and seventeen kills, we've gone from aces to kills now, seventy-nine blocks, that too, highest according to Max Preps for Class AAA. Let's hear it for Letitia Halona. We have a cross-country runner, named to the Navajo Nation All-Star Team, Jonathan Long, are you in the audience? Alright, congratulations Jonathan Long. We have a couple of honorable mentions in Tohachi High School Football District, uh, we have in defense, Quentin Barney. Honorable mention for offense, Carl Smith. So now we also have someone who was, uh, mentioned as a defensive linebacker, he has a very famous name, I don't know if he's in the audience tonight, I'd like to call up Emmett Smith. He's probably at season training or something. Offense, offensive lineman, defensive tackle, Mr. Isaiah Begay. Offensive receiver, defensive, defensive end, Mr. Carlex Capitan. Offensive quarterback, Eric Vicenti. Offensive running, defensive linebacker, Tarantino Begay. Let's give these students a round of applause, these are outstanding football players and volleyball players. Mr. Robinson, would you like to say a few words?
Members of the board, superintendent, um, it's not very often that you have all three of your, um, fall sports teams go to state. It's, in fact, it's extremely rare, and that's due to the hard work of, um, an athletic director and some coaches, that, that put their heart into making sure that we're doing the right things, and we're taking, making sure that our athletes are student athletes first, and, and bringing the right attitude towards, um, athletics at Tohachi High School. And I think that's a, a part of a bigger change that you're gonna see at Tohachi High School, is that we're moving in the right direction, and the attitude, and the spirit of the school carries forth, both in academics and athletics, so I'd like to thank John Brooks, who's here in the audience tonight, for being the athletic director that helps us out with that so much. And I'd like to, um, thank Coach Ballard, who's here representing the football team, so, uh, Coach Ballard, stand up, please. So, second year with us and did a fantastic job, uh, before I, um, in my comments, I'd like to thank all the, uh, the parents who really make this possible, um, and provide that support for their students, and, um, last but not least, the athletes themselves, who put academics first, and then go out on the, on the sporting field and make it happen, um, for the school, so, thank you very much.
So on behalf, at behalf of our retirees, Ms. Kaisley and Mr. Torres, as well as the 1,000 pound club from Gallup Mid School, and all the fine athletes from Tohachi, these are our recognitions for this board meeting, thank you, board.
Mr. Chupetti, what's the next school that we recognize?
I will ask Mr. D.
Okay.
I guess I... 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 I guess I...
No, I don't, sir.
I guess I... 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 I guess I...
Kevin, do you have David Skeet?
I have David Skeet.
I have David Skeet.
I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. I have David Skeet. Friday, the Public Education Department released the report cards. We've been talking for six months to a year, as the zone directors have talked to you, if I've talked to you, that what we're seeing in the schools, we can subjectively be seeing good things. And you've been asking us for measures, objective data instead of subjective. I'm very happy to say what we've been subjectively saying came out objectively, very much so. These are the, this is the report I just gave you. Spreadsheet shows all thirty-five schools, showed their school grade for 2013-14, their points that they had on their report card for 2013-14. Then in column E is their school grade for 2014-15 and their report card grades for So, as I go to the side here where we broke things down, if we look at the points, I'm very happy to say of our thirteen schools in the Principals Pursuing Excellence Program last year, eleven of them gained in points on their report card. Eighty-five percent of our schools gained. Fifteen points, fifteen percent, or two schools dropped in points. University of Virginia program, we had six schools in last year, the 2013-14 year. Five of the schools grew, or eighty-three percent of the schools. One school dropped, and we expected it to drop. That's one of the reasons we had removed the principal there. Of the other schools that were non-supported, ten of them gained, six of them dropped. So, overall, twenty-six of our thirty-five schools, seventy-four percent of our schools gained, whereas the, oh, it went off, twenty-six percent dropped. That's where I take you to the article I passed out that was published in the Albuquerque Journal on December eighteenth, which says Park Leads to Drop in School Grades. So, when we looked at this, we're thinking, well, maybe this is the way the whole state of New Mexico fared. Well, according to the article, 2015 figures showed 297 schools reached levels compared to 332 in 2014, and the number of Ds and Fs rose from 323 to 333. So, statewide, they saw a reduction in their class grades, our school grades. I'm happy to say in ours, we saw growth. If we looked at just the report card grade itself, again, broken down, twenty of our schools gained, ten maintained their grades, only five schools dropped in grades. So, fifty-seven percent of our schools grew, which is extremely exciting. So, when I looked at other schools...
Excuse me, Mr. Chupetti, can you repeat that one again? How many schools gained the grades?
Right here. Twenty schools gained.
Okay.
Ten schools broke even, five dropped, and you can actually look to the left here where all the schools were, and look, they're sorted by the middle schools, high schools, and then the elementary. I'd like to really point out two elementary schools, Indian Hills and David Skeet. An F to an A and a D to a B, which is phenomenal. Phenomenal. They doubled their points on their report card. Indian Hills had 33.37 points last year, 77.45 this year. David Skeet went from forty to seventy-two. Exciting to see. I mean, Twin Lakes right under it, F to C. Crown Point L, F to D. Washington, F to C. We had more Fs last year than any district in the state of New Mexico, and I'm happy to say we've got it down to four. Down to four. And one of them grew. That is awesome. One of them grew tremendously, but when you are like at twenty-two points and you need to get to sixty, they grew like thirty points and still were an F, but they made tremendous growth, is what we're happy to see. So, I decided to look at schools like comparison to ours. So, as I said, Gallup McKinney County Schools, come on, fifty-seven percent of our schools increased, twenty-nine percent maintained, and fourteen percent decreased. Cuddy Law told me Las Cruces Public School is also University of Virginia, and I really don't know what I'm doing, because what I'm doing for University of Virginia doesn't look like what they look like. And that's true, because it's a leadership principle, not a canned program. I'm happy to say, though, fifty-seven percent of our schools increased their grade. Fifty-one percent of Las Cruces schools dropped. Only thirty-five percent of their schools increased. They have thirty-seven schools in their district. We have thirty-five. Our thirty-five schools are spread over 5,000 square miles. Therefore, this school is ten miles from their central office. Phenomenal. Compared them to like schools in our area, we looked at grants and central consolidated Grant Sebelis School District, only three schools gained, or twenty-seven percent, and only three schools in central consolidated gained, at nineteen percent. So, again, while the majority of their schools declined in grades, dropped grades, we were moving up. It is exciting to see. Breaking down the high schools, two schools increased their grades, five maintained, and two decreased. Of those two that increased in grade, six schools actually went up in points. We only had three schools drop in points, and we're going to be working directly targeting those schools for added support. Middle schools, five schools increased, one maintained their grade, and we had one drop. Of the five schools that increased in grades, all five increased in points. We actually had two schools drop in points. And you can look at the front page to see which schools there were. And we will be really working with their principal to ensure that, again, this comes back to what we've been talking about, the alignment of curriculum, alignment of testing, collaboration, and if the school doesn't believe in it, and we're going to do our own thing, they're not seeing the results that the other schools are seeing. Elementary schools was phenomenal. Thirteen schools increased in grades, fifteen increased in points, four maintained their grades, two decreased their grades, four went down in points. So, we had an early Christmas present. This was a celebration. You saw the kids at Indian Hills, starting off with the Macarena, ending just cheering and blowing their little horns and popping their little poppers, because it was hard work at the student and family level, hard work at the teacher level, hard work at the administrator level, and hard work at the support level. And that's what we're doing, but it's starting to pay off. We said in two years, we would start seeing growth. It's here. It's here. And it's something we want to celebrate as a school district, but more importantly, we want to celebrate as a community. And we shared this data with the Gallup Executive Directors Association, which is UNM, RMCH, City of Gallup, McKinney County Government, Council of Governments, Downtown Business Improvement District, and Chamber of Commerce. And when they looked at the results in the data, they were extremely happy, because this is going to help them start attracting new economic development in the area. Gallup's always been criticized for not having a workforce, but we're starting to say, hey, we're having better schools. And if we have better schools, we want businesses to bring their businesses here, they want their employees to come to school here, we want to be able to offer workforce solutions into their jobs. So, they were extremely excited to see, and, I mean, the grades came out on a Thursday afternoon at three o'clock, and they were embargoed till Friday at eleven o'clock. And from Thursday at 3:00 PM till Friday at 11:00, I had a whistle, a spring in my step. I would have done backflips, but then I know that would have brought tears to my eyes because I'd have hurt myself. I was extremely happy. Kind of people looked at why? What's wrong with you? Did you take a happy pill this morning? No. I'm extremely proud of what our school district is doing. Any questions from the board on our grades?
Oh, gosh. We didn't, we don't have those other, the last few pages?
I will send them to you. I was making them at 4:30 before the work meeting, the big spreadsheet I had finished over the weekend. So, I will email you this last one that had the four tabs at the bottom. Okay?
Mr. Chupetti?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nez?
These grades show what our administration, zone directors, and shepherds are capable of under your direction.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, I do appreciate that. And Mr. Manini, if you don't mind, I'd like to take it a step further. You know, we've got a great team here, we've built in a lot of support here, going out actively working, but it also comes down to hard work at the school level, the ICs, the principals, the walkthroughs, more importantly, the walkthroughs with feedback. It's easy to walk through a classroom, check a bunch of stuff, and go back to your office like in the old days, but now it's a walkthrough with feedback within forty-eight hours of talking to the teacher. How can we improve? What do we build on? What are you doing great just to keep doing? Or tell us what you're doing so I can tell the teacher next door. And then the teachers, extremely hard work. We are seeing teachers, some teachers leave because they say, wow, I didn't know teaching was this hard. And it is hard when you do it to this level. This isn't just the old days. I passed out your worksheet, learn it. This is, this is feedback. We want interaction, student-to-teacher interaction. I don't want to see teachers lecturing to students all the time. I don't want to see students just doing busy work. I want to see honest feedback, working between teachers and students. That's where we talk, the education culture, and that's what we're looking to see. So, the teacher to the student to the parent, it's been a huge effort of changing, and that's what's so important about these report cards I gave you, because it's not just park scores, it's not just how they did in one snapshot. This is, you know, the proficiency rate, but it's also school growth, growth of your highest, seventy-five percent of students, growth of your bottom, twenty-five percent of students, the opportunity to learn, which is a survey to parents themselves, and in the upper grades to students themselves, where they're answering and rating, graduation rate for high schools, attendance for elementary schools and middle schools. There's a lot of factors built in here. It's an encompassing factor, these school grades are. So, while we said at the last one, we were excited to see that we're growing in standardized test scores, even on a harder test, well, it's even more important when you start looking through these report cards, and it really breaks things down, comparing schools and cohorts that are like each other in English language learners, like other schools in free and reduced lunch, like other schools in mobility, and seeing how we compare and where we used to look. When I came in two years ago and we had those posted back there on the board, when we had cohorts of forty-four and forty-five, and when we were looking, and we were forty-five out of forty-six, forty-four out of forty-six, well, I got Chi Dodge right here on top. Current standing, seventeen out of forty-six. That's making a huge improvement, and that's in ELL. School growth, twenty-two. Growth of the highest, seventy-five, fourteen out of forty-five. So, comparing them to like performing other schools in the state or like made-up schools, this is some powerful data. It's exciting to see. So, I've given you those. If you have questions on how to read the report cards, I'd be happy to sit down with you and go over them, because some of them get a little technical, but it's got the three-year average, and hard work is paying off.
Mr. Chris?
Mrs. Merito?
I just think I, you know, Mr. Manini's praising certain individuals, but my praise is going to go to the children. I think with everything that these children have been put at their table with multiple testing, with the stresses that they go through, and still perform at this level and continuing to increase the different challenges as they have overcome, you know, that just shows us that our children can do better. And I think the second would be the parents, and having that, having the parents back their children up and, you know, reminding them, go to bed early, eat, do your homework. Those are the, those are the key players in this. It's not, I'm sorry, yes, we do have a part in it, but it's the children and the parents. So, thank you very much for what you guys are doing for your own children, and we're here to continue to try and advocate for you all. But I think it's awesome that we finally see some growth, and it's been a long time coming, and it's been a concern to a lot of the parents in our district, and I think we, and our leaders, our leaders, you know, even my chapter officials, they were asking us, how is the report card look, that we haven't received it yet. And I, you know, but again, even at the, when I was part of the IEC, we kept stressing, no, this is just one test, one day, one time of the year that we're putting, and, you know, to see the growth, the numerical growth, I think that's also very impressive, that no matter if they're still an F, they're gaining. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Merito. Mr. Hineman?
Thank you. Board and Mr. Chupetti, I want to make a couple of observations. There's an old saying that we're probably all familiar with about how you climb a mountain one step at a time, right? And I think what we're seeing here is hopefully a couple steps going up the mountain. But I think we have to keep looking at the whole picture. So, here we have now some current school grades, school scores. Then we have to still also look at those disaggregated student scores and see if that is in sync and jives. I don't have this year's yet, I mean, the most recent ones for that, I guess, the ones I have are really a year old. When you average up these, the grades, the letter grades in the system that have been reported, the elementary schools on average went from a D-plus to a C-plus. That's getting up there. I mean, that's getting solid. The middle schools went from a D to a D-plus average. So, we're not going very far up the mountain, but we're taking some steps. The high schools went from a C to a C. So, they're a little higher, but there's a plateau there. So, I think we have to keep looking at that and be glad for every bit of progress, and then keep analyzing, for example, because the reports we have in front of us also have some disaggregated numbers by race or ethnicity, and there's always that question of is, is this a correlation with ethnicity and race, or is it a correlation with economic resources and experiences of a family? Because we also have a figure in here on, quote, economically disadvantaged kids. So, what's, you know, which things affect what? So, to keep understanding what's going on, I think I'm glad to see the growth, at the same time to know for sure what's causing it, is not always easy on the surface, and often it's a combination of factors, you know, some efforts in the schools and efforts at home, and home responding to school and school responding to home. and home responding to school and school responding to home, all of those things. But I wanted to point out those averages because we are still somewhat at the base of the first half of the mountain. And at least we're going up the mountain, not down the mountain. But let's keep our eye on things and keep at it. And thank you for that report.
One more comment, Mr. Nez.
Thank you, Mr. Hineman. Ms. Melito?
We need to find out what Indian Hills is doing because they're not even UVA or PPE either. So maybe it's something in the water. I don't know. What are they drinking over there? They're awesome. That's great. They're not, it's good to see that, you know, they're doing something. I don't know if they can elaborate to the other schools, but that's, that's really good that they're not even either one of those, but they're very successful.
I can tell you exactly what Indian Hills is doing and they're doing much of the same traits that UVA leadership and PPE leadership has, has done. Mr. Dashner's done a lot of research himself. He's put a lot of it and you'll have to see where Mr. Dashner really butted heads for a year ago with the staff. This is the way we have to change. We have to use formative assessments. We have to use the data from the formative assessment to get to the student level, which is something we're doing in both the PPE and the UVA programs. He pushed it hard on it. A lot of the teachers pushed back and five of them actually quit on him the first year. But he replaced him with people who were willing to do it. Strong accountability, strong feedback from Mr. Dashner. Very energetic person who is in those classrooms, pushing hard, holding high accountability standards, giving great feedback. And that's what does it. He is in the PPE program and that's one thing he said is, hey, this is a lot of the stuff we're already doing. I'm just refining it now with this program. So he's, he was just a natural leader that would fit in with that. His BEI scores were off the chart within that realm, showing that he's a great leader. And those are the things that we're looking for. I cannot discount any, any hard work from the school level to the central office level. I cannot discount any of the supports that they are doing. Because these scores are disaggregated student scores. Every single score that came out of here from current standing, school growth, school growth of lowest performing, school growth of the highest performing is a three-year vast score of every single student in the school. That's how they build these report card grades. That's how they compare us to the state average. This is an extremely huge statistical model within the state of New Mexico that disaggregates every single student over a three-year period of time. And over a three-year period of time, we're showing we're outshining the state. It is a step. It is a huge step in the right direction. I do agree. We are going to climb the mountain. But our goal is, hopefully, we're going to keep going up that mountain and we're not going to get tripped along the way. That's our goal.
Mr. Hineman?
Thank you, Mr. Nez. Couple of other things quickly. One is that I was looking for patterns here and in the reports I have for District Five, one thing that seems to be a pattern between most of the schools is that they're, it's broken down here for student growth of the highest-performing students and student growth of the lowest-performing students. And the highest-performing students' growth is significant and the student growth for the lowest-performing students is often just not there really, the way it looks. So there's something happening there where the highest students are responding to whatever's being done more effectively than with the lowest. So looking at patterns to analyze and look at things that are going on, that's one thing I noticed. And also, I want to, I want to mention this, I guess during this discussion because I had it down as an item for next meeting's agenda. And that is, one of the things that's in here of special concern, I think, is the Theroux School in the high school and the mid-school both went from C to F. And in the same article in the paper, it quoted the large number of suicides since 2014. And I've been aware of that concern in that community, but I didn't know it was that high a number. And I think I want to put on the agenda, attempt to look at that next meeting and see if there's something we can do as, as a, you know, board and leadership and the school and saying, we've got a really serious concern in Theroux that we should not, you know, not look at. And it's not a matter of pointing fingers at statistics. It's a matter of saying, hey, there's something here if we can help with, we need to take a look at it and see if there's anything we can help even a little bit. So just mention that at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Hineman. I, I, I had a discussion with some of our community members today on this in Eastern Navajo. And one of the things that I first pointed out was the quote made by Hannah Skandera, the Secretary of Education, where, you know, she said she was not surprised at the results because heart sets a higher standard. And as we were talking about that, one of the things that we were looking at was the growth in the 20 percentiles. Some of the parents in the communities of Eastern Navajo looked at the scores and saw the growth. And they were impressed with a lot of the scores that had increased by the 20 percentile. Look at some of the schools, Chief Melito, Twin Lakes, Washington, Chi Dodge, different schools that they were looking at and as they saw the Indian Hills, what our secretary had stated a bit ago, what is going on at Indian Hills? What are they doing? And that they weren't part of the UVA, but as our superintendent had said that they were, the principal there had incorporated some of his teachings into UVA. But I think our zone director should spend their time there and look at what teachers are teaching our children there. I think overall, you know, we do see some, some of the schools had dropped. One of the UVA had dropped Anyate. But it just shows that our children's are set with a much higher standard, which I, I, I had seen and I had heard as well during the time when we had the conference in Albuquerque when Secretary Skandera spoke. She said that there's a higher standard set for our children now. At that time, she had mentioned that as well. And when these scores came out, I was very impressed with it. Particularly the UVA schools that are getting to their point in helping our children. I just had mentioned to the parents during our meeting that a lot of it comes from the home when the children has the basic support, the basic support from the parents, grandparents, the uncles and aunties, where you enlighten the children and tell them, you know, in Navajo, we say yegu, yegu in lta, which means really go that beyond and just do the best you can. And whatever they do, whatever they say, they, they learn. You know, you're impressed with it and you always motivate them every day. I brought my sister today and she's one of those of the girls that watches CNN at a young age. And she tells me the news. So when she tells me the news, and oh, I already saw that in the news. And she says, yes, this is what we're learning. But in that manner, you just show them the motivation. And that's, that's where I think it comes from, from the home level, from the hogon level, as I always say, le hogon de, you know, from the home, from the fire, fireplace where the teachings at. That's where I always stress to our parents that where our children need to succeed. So I just want to, again, congratulate our school district and our superintendent as well as our teachers. You're awesome. The nights you spend at, at school, the days you spend, the weekends you spend finding, you know, plans for our children, the principals pushing the teachers, you know, to help, help our children gain that knowledge. Thank you. And, you know, especially to our, to our children. Thank you very much. Yegu, really, really, really continue our education. And I hope we have some listening tonight. And really just keep it going, keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nez. I'm sure the staff really appreciates those words. And I think you really hit it on the nose. It's the motivation and the expectations at the home and the classroom. Big difference between Theroux High School and Indian Hills Elementary. Indian Hills Elementary had a leader who demanded every day, every day, high expectations. Remember last board meeting I told you about Code Purple? Code Purple means Mr. Chibetti or Central Office is in the building. Be teaching. That was the expectation. So we don't know what the expectation was when we weren't in the building. But Code Purple came from Theroux High School. That's, that was their expectation. We're going to teach quality when we're being watched. Well, Indian Hills expected quality every single minute that you stepped on that campus. We're ready to learn. We're going to learn. We're going to teach. We're going to work. That's what it came down to. And Mr. Nez, I think you said that extremely eloquently. Thank you. The next thing was, comes to transportation. I'm going to be doing this over several board meetings, hitting some of the areas that parents have discussed concerns. So I started with Johnson Road. I had technology, not technology, transportation brings some technology in. Unfortunately, with Johnson Road, you don't get a good cell signal in the area. So we can't watch the buses live. We have to actually pull the hard drives out of the buses, put them in a docking station, and then we can access them on the computer. So for several hours this weekend, I had a very eventful weekend. A lot of people were out, were watching Star Wars. I was out watching buses go down the little road where they went to. So I picked a stop on Johnson Road, which was the furthest up. It's past Wolf Springs Road, past Peters Road. It goes up and turns. That's the last point where it turns around and comes back. That was a good area to where I could track the bus and how it came in, came out. So I pulled some random days. I pulled several Mondays since Monday is an early release day for Tohachi. And I couldn't compare them to other days. So the first two are Mondays. If you notice, it got to that turnaround spot at 6:43 on November 9th and 6:42 on November 30th. It went up that road picking up students, did the turnaround. It did not go all the way back to 491. It actually went down the Peters Road and came out on Tolokai Road, picking up those students across those bridges. Has been reported at several board meetings. Then the students are dropped off on the highway for another bus to pick up. That was last year. This year, that bus has taken them kids all the way to school. It arrived at Tohachi Middle School at 7:16 on one day, 7:14 another day. I didn't bother to track it from Tohachi Mid to Tohachi High School. I figured it could make it through the teacher housing compound on its own without any problems. And then I checked it in the afternoon, 14:40 hours, 2:40 in the afternoon on November 9th and 2:39 on November 10th, or November 30th. It dropped off those students. I then pulled random days throughout after that. I pulled December 2nd, 3rd, 8th, and 10th. As you can see down at the bottom, I kind of correlated those. In the mornings, it picked up students at that stop between 6:42 and 6:44. Pretty, pretty consistent. It dropped off at Tohachi Middle School anywhere between 7:14 and 7:20. And I'm going to blame that probably on some construction issues, depending on how it got stopped or how it got behind cars on, on the given day on the two-lane road there. Afternoon early release were on those Mondays. Dropped off at 14:39, 2:39 one day, 2:40 the other day. That's a real tight framework. Afternoon regular release, 3:56 to 4:04. So it was in, within nine, eight, nine minutes. Pretty consistent pickup, drop-off. I'm going to ask any parents in that area if they have any specific concerns. Most of the, I'm able to watch on my screen and if you guys would like to come in at any time, I can pick up, pull up the GPS and look at it a road view or a terrain view. But then it's got all the cameras on the bus. So from the driver's perspective, from the back of the, you know, so I can see how long it sits and kids come on. And I will say, I want to, I want to commend this bus driver. I'm going to recommend her for award because she was a very friendly bus driver. Greeted every student that got on that bus. I mean, I had the audio, the whole bit. You know, good morning. You know, did you enjoy the snow? I was hoping for more, you know? And, and the kids really responded to her. I think it's a great way for them to start their day. You know, it started very positive for them. Not get in, sit down, let's go, come on, I got to get the next bus. You know, this was a very friendly, you know? I hope you all enjoyed your weekend. Hey, you guys ready for school today? You know, welcome, guys, you know? She was very friendly every single day on that, that recording. Unfortunately, I found out by the time I got to December 10th, there's a speed up button down at the bottom where I didn't have to watch the bus drive from Tolokai Road all the way past Twin Lakes, 20 minutes later pulling into Tohachi, sitting there at my desk. Put it on 32 speed and it makes it there in about two minutes. It's pretty great. But unfortunately, I lose audio. So I did, every time I see the bus stop, I would put it back to regular speed so I can hear the bus driver interaction. It's a small bus, two kids per seat max. There was never more than two kids per seat on that video. So I didn't see any overcrowding. I might question the speed through some of the construction zones we're going to talk about. You know, I know it is a 65, but when they're doing the construction, I don't think we need to be driving 65. So we have some concerns there that that GPS gives away. So on this one here, I didn't see any major concerns. But as I said, if parents have any individual complaints in that area, please contact Jeff Bond. And that way we can go to the specific stop, the specific day, and look at specific interactions. I will be going to the David Skeets area for the next report. I know that was a big problem last year with not having enough buses run down there. I'm being told that we were mandated to go to Friday early release for all schools and we're not doing that. That's the old school. That says, schools, you're going to do what Central Office says. We're local autonomy. All the schools are supposed to work with their communities on their early release days. Some have them on Mondays, some have them on Wednesdays, some of them on Fridays because they worked with the schools. And now for us to step in and say, we don't care what the community said, you're going to do it on Friday, every one of you? That takes away the local autonomy. That's not what, not what's, not the philosophy. They're supposed to pick their day with their community. We're supposed to support them. So we're, we're going to stick with our regular early release. We don't need to confuse parents in the middle of the year. We have a babysitter every Monday afternoon and now I'm going to have school Monday afternoon and have to have a babysitter Friday afternoon. It's not good for our community. So we're going to keep the same. There's some concerns about special ed busing on those days. And I will be looking at those individual buses also. So we have a valuable tool. It is great. That camera system is wonderful. I know you saw, we made the news of a driver hitting a student. It was on film. It's the easiest investigation I think we've ever had in our lives. It's right there on film, everything we did. Released it to Gallup Police Department. I'm kind of disappointed that they released it and we had the student on, on film there. But very powerful system that we now have. I can see speed. I can see where they're at. I can see if they're sitting on the side of the road visiting friends instead of getting to the bus stop on time. I can look for bus overcrowding. Two years ago, when we had issues and I was getting up at 5:30 in the morning to follow the buses to see where, how it got and where it was and what stop. Where we've, we've reached the 21st century. Thank goodness. Questions on the busing for Johnson and Tolokai Road? Alrighty. I like those questions. I think that brings me to the end of mine. I'm done, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Hineman?
I have a question. I'm not still sure on our protocol in terms of what the superintendent's report, if that's open to questioning all kinds of things or if it has to become an agenda item. But I, we had this thing before of, of starting to record to the extent we have it reasons for people's resignations so we can see if there's patterns there. And I think we have about five, I don't have it in front of me, about five resignations in our list this time. But we also have, I think now, about 28 vacancies, professional and certified vacancies, plus the other staff ones. That seems like quite a bit. I'm wondering if there's any, what, how are we doing in terms of? That seems like we have a lot of vacancies right in the middle of the year, sort of.
We'll be reporting to you the first of every month on that. I do have the five on my desk, waiting to be added to any more that we might have mid-year. I do have the five on my desk, waiting to be added to any more that we might have mid-year. Um, the reasons being, so, uh, first board meeting of every month, I do have a plan on giving that to you. Um, and then Mr. Hyatt did say in January, we were going to start reporting on our recruitment and retention issues. Um, I will say, we're still under the state average for the number of openings, um, per, per classroom capac- uh, capita. So, you know, we're still better off than we've been in previous years. We're not where we wanna be. We wanted to be a hundred percent, and we'll have a report the first meeting in January on those two issues.
I, I just assume that those, some of those vacancies may not be easy to fill, but in the, nevertheless, those are all factors that go into those, the things that affect even those school grades, because in terms of whether we've got certain, you know, classroom that's not being covered by a certified person, or certain activities that aren't at their fullest, and so, um, I don't, I don't know what other schools have for vacancies per size, but twenty-eight is, I just see it in the report and I say, "Well, we've got quite a few in my mind," so I'm wondering.
Right, we'll, we'll have a good breakdown for you in January with the presentation.
Would that include full-time subs? Because, you know, I know the subs are not certified, but yet they're teaching full-time to the students, and I think that those are things that need to change, and I know that we have a lot of students that come down from the, to the community center that, you know, tell me, I'm kind of reteaching them math, um, or giving them what I learned, new strategies, um, for math, but, you know, those are some of the things that, um, could hinder these grades, um, for Thiru, and I just wanna know, are the, are they, are you to, are they, when you're counting the positions that are vacant, are those, are positions include full-time subs?
Every one of those openings have a full-time sub in them. We're still providing services. Um, some of the full-time subs are actually licensed personnel. They just don't want to work full, full-time for the district, the, the full benefits and such. So, um, it just depends on the position, and I don't think that'll be too hard for us to put into that report in January about what type of posi- what type of people per education or licensure we have in those full-time positions. Um, you know, this is, goes back to the debate of, we had with several principals at the beginning of the year that weren't filling positions, because they were happy with, um, full-time subs that were in school teacher prep colleges right now, and they wanted to keep them till the end of the year in that classroom, 'cause then they're gonna graduate, and then we can hire them as a teacher. That's not what we do for our kids. We will hire them when they get their credentials, but we should be trying with every effort to fill those positions. Um, we have had s- some trouble with the H-1B visas, um, of people who were promised to be here by August that are not getting here for two, three months because of the changes in, I don't know if it's our homeland security, or if it's in the foreign country's government of not releasing, um, from their end. Uh, there's been some issues both ways, where we've had to jump through some hoops just to get some people released from their countries, um, highly educated people. Um, and the same thing here, we've had some hang-ups on our end. It seems like we can take some ref- refugees from other parts of the world, um, and get them visas overnight, but we have some highly educated people who are coming here to work and, and help in much-needed vacancies, especially special ed and math, and it's like pulling teeth to get them here. Um, and we've had some principals who are very adamant that that's the people they wanted, and they're, they're paying the price for having those vacancies for thirty, sixty days as we get those people. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chappetti. With that, we go to board reports, Mr. Huneeman?
Very little to report compared to all the things that were going on these last weeks. I've heard of a number of events after the fact. I think it was at Mi'amara that had a fine arts dinner and fundraiser that I heard was really successful. I heard about it afterwards from a person who went. I did, um, get in on part of, uh, the, uh, Manuelito Middle School Band and Choir Concert. I stumbled on that by accident, but it was going well, and kids were seemingly prepared pretty well for that. Um, I did drop in for a short time at the Red Rocks Chapter Christmas Dinner and Events just because we were invited as a board, so I thought, "Well, appreciate that." And I went and, it was interesting to me just because it was, the chapter house was packed of all age, with all ages, and the, uh, lady who was emceeing the event spoke entirely in Navajo, and the council delegate who made remarks spoke entirely in English. So it's just interesting to see what, what life is like these days for us, so, um, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Huneeman, uh, Mr. Menini?
Thank you very much. Uh, I attended the concert held at JFK where, uh, Board Member Huneeman was on the singer's platform, and our elementary and mid-school musicians did an excellent job. This is their second concert, uh, second annual concert for Christmas. And, uh, after that, the next Tuesday, I attended, uh, the elementary school boys' basketball game at Lincoln. Boy, those courts are small.
Adequacy.
Yeah, adequacy, yeah, but that's why we needed to build a new one. They played, uh, Red Rock, and Red Rock School is very large compared to them. Uh, I also attended the Indian Hills Elementary Assembly announcing that their school went from a F to an A and helped celebrate their achievements. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Menini, uh, Mrs. Melito?
Attended, um, several basketball games, um, within the area. Also, the Baca Chapter, um, had their Christmas, um, community dinner. Um, so did the, um, Yumbato Chapter, um, that I was invited to. Also, the Thiru Chapter, um, had their meeting yesterday, but I couldn't stay too long. I just gave my, gave a report, um, uh, let's see, what else? There was a band concert at the high school. One of them I missed because of a board meeting, and it just had to be the one my son was playing in, so he's still kinda mad at me about that. Um, let me think, I think that's, and then today, there was a very, um, today I went to Winter Rock to attend, um, the Navajo Nation Youth Council that they're try- trying to construct, and that, with my other hat that I wear, besides the Santa hat today, um, is, um, suicide prevention. And, you know, this, this where Lynn was talking about where our kids are struggling, and I think with forming that youth council, I think it's something that's gonna be very beneficial to our nation, so thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Melito, uh, Mr. Mitchell?
Um, this past Friday, I attended the, um, the Tohatchee Elementary Christmas Program. Um, I sat there and enjoyed watching all these little kids get up and sing, and, and it was something that was really enjoyable to me, to see the parents all there and, um, so proud of their children, you know, it was a good thing, and I was glad I, um...
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mitchell. Um, I, uh, have been having, uh, small group meetings, uh, with different, uh, parents, uh, committee members, grandparents, elders throughout District Two. Um, today, uh, I did get a chance to go out to, uh, Public Pentado, um, and, uh, a lot of concerns they brought up, um, and I think they're watching this evening, uh, livestream, so, um, a quick shout-out to all the Eastern Navajo parents, uh, at and, uh, Pentado. Um, I also attended the, um, press conference we held at, uh, Indian Hills. Uh, thank you to the superintendent for inviting me. Um, got a chance to see our children, um, dance with joy and happiness, and I, and I, and I had told my family that the students there had deserved it, um, for all the hard work they're doing there. Um, my family were very impressed, um, to hear that kinda news when I, when we sat down for supper that evening. Um, all in all, I think, uh, we're gonna have a good year in twenty sixteen. Um, I look forward to meeting with our parents in, uh, Crown Point and White Horse Lake in the coming week. Uh, we do have, we are having our Christmas dinner tomorrow at Church Rock Chapter. Um, we'll be singing there, uh, our chapter officials and community members, so if you have a chance, come out and eat some roast beef with us at the Church Rock, so. Um, with that, I will go ahead and go into, uh, school site reports, Zone Four.
Sweet Miss Rachel Rodriguez?
Thank you, good evening, board members, President Nez, Mr. Mitchell, Ms. Manuelito, Mr. Menini, Mr. Huneeman, and the audience, and Superintendent Chappetti. My name is Rachel Rodriguez, and I'm the director for Zone Four. I have eight schools that I help every week. Um, four elementary, Indian Hills is one of them, um, Turpin Elementary, Jefferson Elementary, and Red Rock Elementary. My two mid-schools are Kennedy Mid and Navajo Mid, and my two high schools are Thiru High and Navajo Pine High. We just started this program, Principals Pursuing Excellence, this August with five of the principals, and so I just wanted to give a quick overview about PPE. We've been using that acronym a lot, so I just wanted to give you a little bit of background information about PPE, and then I do have one of my rock star principals here to talk a little bit about, um, parent involvement. That's a huge part of staff and student culture at schools, and Ms. Manuelito and President Nez were talking about parents, how important their role is. Mr. Huneeman had asked too, to see some, some of what behind the scenes we do. So, um, Ms. Mauer is here to show you how hard she's worked on parent involvement this year. I'm gonna go over here, 'cause there's some slides that I don't want to have to... Okay, so Principals Pursuing Excellence Program aims to advance an unwavering commitment to improving outcomes for students. This is what I really like, is their theory of action. What, what Principals Pursuing Excellence Program, it's from the Priority Schools Bureau from the state of New Mexico, and it is aligned to the University of Virginia model in Paul Bambrick Santoio's work. So they have to have a theory of action. What is it that we're gonna do? So this is what we believe. If we strengthen the competencies of leaders to transform districts and schools, then they will have the capacity to take bold and purposeful action. If leaders take bold and purposeful action, then they establish the conditions for effective teaching and learning. If the conditions for effective teaching and learning are established, then teachers will have the opportunity to improve instructional practice. That's exactly what they've been doing at Indian Hills, at David Skeet, at lots of schools, improving instructional practice. If teachers improve instructional practice, then student learning will increase. So the core idea is by Paul Bambrick Santoio, exceptional school leaders succeed because of how they use their time, what they do, and how and when they do it. So you can see in the middle is, the, the supported principal is called the mentee, and so they have a system of support completely around them. At the top, they have the NMPED. Then we have a turnaround leader that is kind of the liaison between the PED and the district, available, a lot easier to get ahold of if you need help than the PED. Um, the mentor, which is myself and Mr. Bukovic, and then the district support as well, everybody in the district working and aligned, supporting the mentee. So my role as a mentor is I work with the turnaround leader, like I said, and the mentee to assure that their ninety-day plan is completed. In their ninety-day plans, they do focus on staff and student culture, wi- being the culture of learning and teaching. Huge part of that culture is parent involvement. Another piece of the ninety-day plan is data-driven instruction. So you're looking at standards and you're assessing the instruction. No longer does the teacher say, "Well, I taught it." Now they're saying that the students learn it. That's, that's the biggest piece. I'm there for communication, um, in their schools every week, helping with classroom walkthroughs, helping with anything they need. The Priority Schools Bureau, they provide direction and expectations for us, and so like I, oh, and I'm sorry, a third piece of the ninety-day plan is observation and feedback. That's why it's so important that we're in classrooms every single week giving feedback to teachers. They do provide three convenings and trainings every year with remarkable speakers. Um, we've heard Paul Bambrick Santoio, we've heard people from Harvard, um, people from the school, the pri- I'm thinking of University of Virginia. What's the School of Education? Curry Project. And we also have trainers that train us in how to coach, right? So we're not just put in this role as mentor and then say, "Go forth and do." We are provided training on how to coach, and there's a coaching continuum where you can be as a consultant and tell the new principal, help them, give them advice, whatever they need, all the way to coaching them. What is it that you want for this teacher? What is it that you need for your budget? So we work within that continuum all the time, coaching our principals. They also have to meet with superintendents across the state for this dramatic change to happen, and Superintendent Chappetti has been a, a big advocate of this program. This is what people are saying about the PPE program. It's an admirable project, because our outcomes are clear, student learning will increase. That's a clear outcome. It's also innovative, providing support in a new and different way. It's adaptable and relevant. PPE connects to other initiatives, we adjust as needed, and we know leadership is essential, essential. And we have committed individuals in PPE. We use data, focus on culture, demonstrate ownership of the work. Students take ownership. Teachers take ownership. So I just wanna leave with one thought. We did have, um, J. Bruce Harold for Harvard Business School. He did come and do a training on executing strategy, and his quote is, "Leaders must change their own behavior, what they do, what they focus on, where they spend their time. Their behavior models the behavior they seek in others and helps promote the execution effort." So it is, it is from the top. We are accountable, as we are- As we are holding principals accountable, as we are holding teachers accountable, as we are holding students accountable. So we have to walk the walk and talk the talk. And so on that note, I do have one of my rock stars. Um, Ms. Mauer was not in PPE last year and she did bring her school from a C to a D, I'm sorry, a D to a C. So that's amazing, a whole letter grade in one year. But Ms. Mauer has the leadership qualities that PPE looks for. They don't just accept everybody. They have to apply, they have to go through a BEI just like UVA. They have to be accepted and invited. They have to have the potential to just turn things around. And so Ms. Mauer did that last year by herself, without any support. Her and her teachers worked really hard. So they saw those leadership qualities in her and now it's just a matter of refining it and offering her that extra pair of hands. And I can't wait to see what she does for our kids at the end of this year. So it's minimized at the bottom. Go back to my desktop. It's down here. Yeah. So Ms. Mauer works relentlessly on staff and student culture. Is her school safe? Do people say good morning? Are the kids learning? Are teachers teaching all the time? Are parents welcome? Do they, are they communicated with? Do they, do parents feel involved? It's very important for Ms. Mauer's school. So that's why I wanted her to be here to present what she's done just this year in parent involvement.
Thank you, Rachel. Good evening to our school board and to our audience, Mr. Chappetti. Um, Rachel asked me to come in and just talk about a few of the things that we've been working on. So our vision statement says, "Work hard, go far, always remember who you are." That's something that we think about every day. We also wrote an aspiration statement. Turpin Timberwolves will leave tracks for all other schools to follow. Oh, and we, we howl every day when we say that. In the mornings, um, I have my Navajo princess and my brave warrior come up. They say the vision statement, the aspiration statement. They lead the pledge in English and in Navajo, they lead our, our New Mexico pledge also. So looking at work hard, the first part of our vision statement. Students, teachers, and families are working hard to ensure our students are college and career-ready. Our school grade improved from a D in two thousand thirteen, fourteen to a C this year. Part of what um brought that forward is taking the PARC. So I wanted to give you an example of what a PARC question looks like. This is a PARC practice question for fifth grade. Which of these are equal to eighty-three point oh four three? I can't see it good from here. Select the two correct answers. That's something our kids are having to get used to, two correct answers. When we went to school, you always picked one. This, this brings the rigor so much higher just by asking for two correct answers. Okay, so look at that for just a sec. Eighty-three and forty-one tenths, eight times ten plus that whole long sentence. You're gonna have to figure out every one of these to come to your correct answer. Eighty-three and forty-one thousandths at the bottom. Okay, so that's what our kids are looking at when they take a PARC test. And this is a fifth grade question, fifth grade math. So when you look at that we improved from a D to a C, that takes tremendous work from our kids, our parents, and our teachers, because this test is so rigorous. Work hard. We're a PPE school, which means our school community continuously looks at data and plans ways to improve. So when I hear that a principal is paying for extra data analysis, I can really understand that. It takes so much work. Our next one is from, this is Tameedra Garcia. She was our last year's Navajo princess. "Our students are the future ceremonial queens." I know this little girl will be. "Doctors, lawyers, teachers, electricians, and parents to the next generation." She was very shy before she became our queen and now she's been, she has been all over the Navajo Nation. She's met the president, she's met council members, um. She has a whole slideshow that if you could see it, it's amazing, the things that she's done. She's been in parades, she's been all over. Um, always remember who you are. I want us to, to think about that. My community is very much a farming community. So my PE teacher went and got these boxes. My summer school, my K-three-plus kids planted. We had a garden all year long. They ate onions, pumpkins. They had maybe two things of corn come up, that's about all we could get. We had flowers, um, they took care of it for the whole summer into the fall. It's something that goes with our community. This is from my Navajo Language and Culture Festival, where we had our Navajo Princess um competition and our Brave Warrior Competition. Mr. Nez gave our invocation. We um had five princesses and the secretary from the Manuelito Chapter, where our judges, our kids, our parents had to teach their children how to introduce themselves in Navajo, how to um tell about their clans. Then they also had to teach them a um talent for this competition. It's amazing what second to fourth graders can do when their parents teach them the things that they need to know. I, I'm just so impressed with them when they get up and do the talents that they do at such a young age. And that's part of always remembering who you are. Our community is full of artists. I have a great art teacher. These young kids are showing some of the art things that they've done in art class. And the last thing, I have wonderful teachers. And Turpin's teachers are golden. And this is Viola and I with Barbara Stanley. Terry cut me out of the other picture, but I did have to go too, so it was a pretty interesting night. And if you were looking at the fifth grade question, the answers to the math question are D and E. Thank you very much.
I can answer any questions that you might have at this time?
Uh, Ms. Manuelito?
With all the other um zone directors, um, one thing that I continue to emphasize is um the need for all of you guys to go into the community. And make, this is a wonderful presentation, and it shows, it can show our parents what you guys are doing. Um, I think with uh the other zone directors, the first, the first one, um, you know, you know, they, they projected a lot of things through our culture and, or they, they need it to. And I think some of the stuff that you presented emphasized not just the educational culture, but our, the culture that we're um used to seeing and hearing. So I don't have a question, but I just really want to um encourage you um to continue to go to the chapter meetings, the community gatherings, um, the parent meetings, the IEC meetings, and continue to show them um what ea- what our schools are, what's happening in the eight schools that you're looking over.
Thank you, I will. And I know Mrs. Mauer does attend chapter meetings for the, the students that she represents at her school. So yes, I will, thank you.
Mr. Huniman?
I'm probably a little behind on some of this that the rest of the board knows from earlier presentations on, on this system. But I wanna just see, um, the zone director and the mentor are the same position, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And then the turnaround leader, uh, we had an organizational chart provided to us a few meetings ago, and the turnaround leader doesn't show up on our organizational chart. Where does that, how does that fit in, if I may ask, with you or Mr. Chappetti?
Thank you. The turnaround leader is provided by the state. He's a superintendent. His name is Agan Tagaro. And he's had specialized training um as well to be a turnaround leader. He's had success, he's a superintendent, he's had success in helping schools grow, helping parents. Um, so he's assigned by the state, by the Priority Schools Bureau.
Okay, thank you. I've never been clear on that, so thanks for that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Huniman. I just wanna say, uh, thank you for your presentation, as well as to Ms. Mauer. Um, thank you for the presentation, and I did enjoy the um pageant there. And I, I did see the wonderful presentation slides, so good job out there, so, thank you.
Rock star, thank you.
Okay, with that, we do have a report from the, in the Education Committee, uh, JOM report. I believe it's a written report.
Good evening, board members, staff, guests. Um, we haven't had a board meeting for the month of December quite yet. We have it scheduled for December twenty-eighth. But I do still continue to have concerns regarding the Opens Meeting Act. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hope the holiday season finds you and your families doing well. Most recently, you may have been informed or made aware of the concerns regarding the implementation and the use of the Open Meeting Act by the Indian Education Committee. The important item to remember here is that we as IEC members only began to utilize the Open Meeting Act as of this twenty-sixteen school year. A few months ago, the Open Meeting Act was somehow immediately adopted and inserted in our revised bylaws of the twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen under Article One. Please remember, we only have recently began using the Act and need time to adjust and adapt to the use of the Act. Whereas the district employees seem well-versed in the interpretation, in, in the interpretation of the Act and do not hesitate to make it known. We as a committee member have a goal and objective to serve and advocate for the Native American children of the school district. And we understand the Act serves as a tool for conducting our meetings. However, it should not be used to discourage our right to serve as advocates for our children. When I provide you reports as the president of the IEC, I wanna re- provide reports on the activities that we have accomplished or have, or how we strive to better educate our Native American youth. However, when stall tactics are being used, we can't conduct the much-needed business to serve our children. Children that are in need of our voice and guidance, yet we are being caused to neglect our duties as representatives of schools and the chapters that we serve. In conclusion, we need to be allowed to exercise, be proactive in our positions as members of the IEC and not be micromanaged. Thank you, and I appreciate it. And we're still, I was still hoping we would have our youth conference this month. But unfortunately, again, based on Opens Meeting Act, I have to, um, we have to, um, I guess, read thoroughly and regarding our subcommittee meetings. And see, hopefully we'll have a youth conference that's been prolonged, and hopefully we'll get it going in January. Thank you.
Monica Pollan.
Mr. President?
Ms. Manuelito?
Um, who implemented, um, or who added the Opens Meetings Act to your Article One? We had, when we did a revised bylaws, we were only supposed to revise two areas according to Navajo Nation. And that was to take out the at-large, because we couldn't have an at-large and um compensate them. The second part was that we had to, um, the second part was um revised it to where, um, we had to correlate it to where no at-large was going to be implemented at all. Um, we had to make sure all IEC members were parents of the Gallatin County County Schools. That was just that part we were supposed to revise. But we started to go through it in Opens Meeting Act. I can honestly tell you, I don't know when that was implemented. It might be in a time when I didn't attend one meeting, I don't know, but I don't recall. And our bylaws were supposed to be given to us in June. And I never got a copy of our revised bylaws after it was, all this implementation was done, until we had our orientation and Ms. Wanda Johnson gave us our bylaws and a lot of things in there were kind of new to me, because I didn't remember or recall a lot of things that were implemented in there. But like I said, I don't know if it was a meeting where I missed and the IEC members might have implemented it and explained to them why it was in there. I don't know. But as far as the meetings I've attended, I never um came across where we put the Opens Meeting Act in there. I started to read up on it, and a lot of things in there, if, you know, I, I may be interpreting it wrong, but a lot of things in there supersede CFR twenty-five. Our parliamentary procedures, our Robert rules, they don't, it's not, it doesn't go with the Opens Meeting Act. So how is all this going to work for us? That's what my question is. And we have yet to sit down and ask these questions from the district. That, that was a couple of, um, you know that the um bylaws is under you guys, and you guys are more than welcome, you guys can change those.
Yes.
And I think, um, um, Mr. Nez, I would like to encourage again, um, again, a second attempt to sit down and have a work session with our parents. These are our parents that we, you know, we label them as Indian Education Committee, but they are our parents within the district. We need to sit together and if I, if we need to make it a directive on the next, we, we need to do something. This is, this is going um way too long. Another two weeks have gone by. We have not made that work session happen, and it needs to happen with our, um. Now we've got audits happening, we've got attorneys involved. All that should have been done, this meeting should have happened before, anything else should have happened. Our parents need the training. Um, I think that was mentioned the last time, that, um, um, they don't, they're not getting no support. And we're not giving them that support. And it's getting frustrating, and I can understand from their emails that they've been sending, um, that they are frustrated. And I think we need to step in, someone needs to step in. Uh, we've got directors that are under bilingual, we got directors that are in, under Indian Education, we got coordinators. We need to take the initiative to help our parents. And as a board, I am requesting again that we have this meeting between the superintendent, the board, the business, and our IEC parents.
Um, I would, uh, ask the board if we could go ahead and move that down for further discussion down at the new business. You can see, uh, towards the end of our meeting, we do have this as a topic. Uh, it is a great concern, um, not only to myself, but as well as the rest of the board, uh, regarding the IEC JOM programs. So if we could respectfully move it to that point, um, and further discuss, um, some of what the findings were and some of the concerns that I want to address as well, um, to that point. So, uh, Ms. Yazi, if you can stay to that point, we can go ahead and, uh, discuss it furtherly at that point and hopefully come out to a solution at this point in time. Um, uh, Mr. Mitchell?
Um, yeah, I just, um, wanted to ask, uh, if, um, the IEC president, vice president, or secretary, you know, you guys, they started, um, this Opens Meetings Act. Did you guys have any type of training? Did they provide any type of training for you? Um, cause as school board members, we go to our, our conferences and they have Because as school board members, we go to our, our conferences and they have, um, sessions and they have a whole session on Opens Meetings Act.
Yeah.
And, uh, so therefore, I'm, I'm asking, were you guys providing any type of training or any type of info on exactly what the Opens Meetings Act is and what it stands for?
No, I, no, we haven't. Um, but we've been, every, like, when we attempt to do something, oh, you know, we get emails real quickly to dictate to us what we're doing wrong or what we're, what we can and cannot do. And that gets pointed out real, you know, quickly. As far as the training, I asked our coordinator back in November, let's do a work session. I'm not really fully aware of what this open, Opens Meeting Act is. And it's, um, a lot of things are being dictated to us, but like I said, I'm, I must, I'm either misinterpreting what's the Opens Meeting Act is, but when I started to read thoroughly through it, it's, it l, it supersedes the CFR twenty-five. So I don't know what the purpose was to, um, implement it in our bylaws. And yes, we were gonna consider removing it, but we were, we were also stressed by employees not to remove it. So my purpose is why? And we don't have a training, and we don't have a full understanding. You know, we're just kinda left in limbo.
Okay, um, so, um, and I think that you probably need to request through, through your coordinator again that you guys need some type of training on, on Opens Meetings Act. Um, they can't just throw it out there for you guys, and you guys don't even know what it is, you know. Um, the other thing is, you know, you have, you mentioned your youth conference, you're still trying to do it. So, may I ask what the hold of this?
In the, in the last month's meeting, we had addressed the concerns regarding our youth conference, and a lot of it had to do, again, with the, um, the process. Okay, you have, we had our components, we had the educational plan, how the youth conference was going to be, was gonna happen. We had months in advance of our meetings. It's not like we just, you know, had it one day. We had scheduled, um, committee meetings to, um, have this youth conference. When that day came, um, paperwork was held up regarding, um, things that were questioned by the business office that we, they couldn't, we had to be careful, we had to make sure JOM was spending corrective, correctly. And a lot of things that were addressed to me was preventive audit findings. Before it became an audit finding, we had to prevent it, when it was never an audit finding in the past. So a lot of things were nitpicked about things we were doing, and it was really discouraging. And so, even though we worked with Ms. Paletta White regarding the test scheduling, all the schools were in agreement to still have the youth conference. Even though it was the week of the Thanksgiving dinner, we still worked around it. All we were working with was the truancy kids, kids with suicide, all this didn't, still didn't turn out, everything was canceled.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, again, uh, we'd like to, uh, stress to move this down to the discussion. Um, on H, a lot of the questions that we have, uh, would be appropriate under that, uh, that particular issue. Um, this section, we just, you know, wanna get the reports. Um, the JOM report, I believe, is the Green Page, uh, um. Uh, Ms. Johnson, I believe, is not here today, but she has a written report here for you guys, so you guys can go ahead and look it up. Um, without continuing on to our notices of communication, announcements, reminders, December twenty first to January first, two thousand sixteen is a winter break for our students. January fourth, two thousand sixteen is that a day? No school. And that day, we do have our Board of Education meeting here in the boardroom. January eighteen, two thousand sixteen is Dr. Martin Luther King Day, every now and school, for the whole district. Uh, January nineteen, two thousand sixteen is our next Board of Education meeting, which is here in the boardroom. Oh, also, uh, January fifth, we do have the blessing, the opening of, uh, Catherine A. Miller Elementary School in Chirrock. Um, January fifth, yeah, that's the finalized set date. Um, I believe it's starting in the morning, nine AM. So, uh, that's, uh, the day for Catherine A. Miller Elementary, uh, blessing.
Uh, Mr. President, can you please, um, put a notice that we might have more than three board members attending that event?
Yeah, I, I believe we will have that out, um, notifying that we might, uh, have all five board members due to its, uh, the school opening. We're gonna put that in. Um, with that, we have one action item, uh, done in old business. Approval of our out-of-state, uh, travel for Belinda Cross, EDC, New Orleans, Louisiana, February eighth to the fort, two thousand sixteen, to attend, uh, two thousand sixteen NASP Annual Convention. And that'll be under entitlement, idea B. Board, board members, any questions?
Um. I, no, Mr. President.
Ms. Henneman?
If I recall right, there was a question on the superintendent's mind, and I presume he has a recommendation at this point.
Okay, wait, let me hear your recommendation, Mr. Superintendent.
Um, Ms. Cross is paying for her own room to stay at that same resort, Woods Held. And then she will be paying for the workshops that the CEUs are provided for. So we will be providing the per diem, the trip there and the registration of the conference itself. So I, I do support her goal.
There's a favorable recommendation on this item, board members?
Oh, can I ask a question?
Uh, Ms. Malito.
Uh, so the room she's paying for herself, um, because the conference is held at that facility?
It's two hundred and, what was it, ninety? Two hundred thirty-six dollars or something per night. Um, I asked if they would research to see if their, her hotel's not in the resort that she can commute to at a cheaper rate that fits the O, IDEA is a federal fund. Um, they do have to fit the OMB circular rates, and that, that is extremely high. Um, instead of looking for their areas, I guess she just elected to pay for her own rooms.
Oh, so, is there a way, I don't, I'm just throwing questions out there to understand, um, the rates that are at that price in that area, is there a way that we can, we can pay for the certain amount that's regulated? And then she pay the other, like, if it's a hundred and fifty dollars, then, um, she can pay, we, the difference, is that, is that possible?
I would have to defer to the Saints. I, I'm, I'm not knowledgeable enough on that three-inch-thick binder of the OBM.
Well, and it's a conflict between, um, the board policy that was adopted for travel. We no longer have a per diem amount for hotel rooms. It's all based upon actual. So we don't have a set rate that we would just automatically pay for a hotel room. The only time per diem is allowed is when there's overnight travel on the very last day of a multi-day trip. So there is no per diem dollar amount that's within our board policy. Um, the state only allows per diem if you tie the hotel room and food together, and that would be eighty-five dollars. But our board, our policy doesn't have that, and the reason why is because we've, we've adopted the actuals. The reason that we did that is because of the audit finding that we've carried for multiple federal funds for a couple of years now, um, regarding document retention. And so because we are spending federal dollars on these professional development opportunities, they are wanting to see the documents, the, the documents when they come. So that is another one of the reasons that we went to all actual on our travel policy.
Thank you, Miss Henneman.
Thank you. Any more questions, board members? If not, uh, we do have a favorable recommendation from our superintendent.
So moved.
Moved by, uh, Ms. Malito to approve the out-of-state travel for Belinda Cross, Roche Office.
Mr. Henneman? Mr. Manini?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Nez?
Yes. Thank you for that, board. Um, we come down now to our last new business item. HA, AH, the Johnson O'Malley Program, Indian Education Committee. Uh, this is sort of a discussion, um, where I felt that we needed to, uh, bring forth, uh, to the board. If you look at your packet, um, I did notice that, I see my name on there as a presenter, um. And, um, with that, I, uh, believe we had, uh, gotten a copy of the legal opinion provided by Cuddy Law. Um, I did know, uh, I, I actually just heard a bit ago that, uh, our secretary had stressed that, uh, just like a request to have a meeting among the JOM, IEC, the administrators, board, um, regarding the program or the, or the IEC. Um, and one of the things that we, we had waited for was, uh, legal opinion, uh, provided by Cuddy Law. Um, and I, I don't know if all the board members did get a copy in the email, um, regarding this, uh, issue. Um, so I, I go ahead and leave this floor open, um, for the board to discuss and see any, uh, potential, um, uh, resolution to this issue. Uh, I would like to go ahead and start from Mr. Henneman, if he has anything, and move up into this way, and any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um. We've heard concerns, I think, from IEC members, parents, as you point out, so, I think at every meeting. And, uh, the, uh, one of the things in the attorney's report or opinion to us clarifies that the IEC is really not, in one sense, a part of the school's organization. Uh, they're, they're not employees, they're not appointed by the school, the elections are not set up by the school. They're really under a subcontract directory with Navajo Nation. And so, in, in that sense, they're not responsible to us, and we're not responsible for them, in a technical sense. But obviously, we want the IEC to be successful, at least I do, and I think they'll do. And if there's a way we can help bring some understandings about, uh, for example, just what the report this evening, uh, mentioned about the Open Meetings Act being inserted into, or as a revision into the IEC bylaws. And yet, just a meeting or two back, we approved, uh, Indian policies and procedures as part of district, uh, policies under Impact Aid, and in that, already in the previous one last year, uh, that states that the New Mexico Open Meetings Act applies. And it states that it requires seventy-two-hour notice to be given to the public prior to convening a meeting. So one of, a couple of things here. One is, the IEC bylaws, as one document, our, our school district Indian policies and procedures is another, and they need to be in harmony. And then, another point of, of confusion, I think, and concern, it's been communicated to us as board members in several ways, is how, what does the Open Meeting Act require? Does it require three days' notice, advanced notice for meetings, or, or, or ten days? The way I understand it in our own board policy says ten days. And in the commu, the information that comes with at least the, the old co, Open Meetings Act that we have says, "In most circumstances, the Attorney General will consider reasonable a notice procedure providing ten days' advanced notice for regular meetings." But in our IPP, it says seventy-two hours, which I think translates to three days.
Mr. Henneman, it's, it's both. It is both. Um, notice of a meeting has to be given, the day, the Attorney General recommends thirty days. He will go as far out as ten days, though. Uh, that's notice of the meeting. At seventy-two hours before the meeting, an agenda has to be publicly posted.
Well, let me, let me, let me continue, because that's not what I'm reading, and we can, we can get around on that. But that's another point. There's a distinction between the notice for a meeting and the publishing of an agenda. But the IPP that we approved before says, quote, "The New Mexico Open Meetings Act requires seventy-two-hour notice to be given." That doesn't say agenda, so maybe we need to go back and correct that, if that's not, not accurate. But I'm saying, these are some of the mechanics that, first of all, need to be, I mean, that's one of the things. It's simply straightening out some of our understandings on mechanics. That's one part of the issue. Another part, I think, is this matter of who is to help the IEC and come to some understanding internally about how it's to operate and so on. And I, my personal opinion, just to jump ahead on that point, is I think that the Navajo Nation, as I understand the attorney's opinion, is responsible to provide that support and training. And I think what we ought to consider as a board is asking and inviting the Navajo Nation to provide that training, uh, as needed, to the IEC, but not just to do it in isolation. We, we all need to be on the same page. So if they can provide the training where the appropriate, uh, school administrators, the director of Indian Ed, and so on, uh, are there, and also board members, if possible, so we can get this thing rolling on the same direction. Um, but that, that's my initial thoughts. And, Mr. Tupiti, um, I understand what you're saying about, I mean, we need, uh, to get that up, make sure the Open Meetings Act that we have, uh, for reference is, you know, maybe that statement's still accurate, but my copy's from two thousand and six, so we need to make sure of those kinds of things. And, and then get the, the numbers, the days straightened out, but that should be an easy part. And then the IEC's adjustment, if, if they're used to, not used to having, let's say they need to provide ten days' notice. They have to get used to that. But the other thing the attorney's opinion says is, raises a question, I think, as to whether IEC is even under that New Mexico law, because they're under tribal jurisdiction when it comes to resolution. And so that's another point, where if the Navajo Nation can help sort those things out, um, I think we can get there, but.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Henneman. Uh, Mr. Manini, you have anything?
I have a memorandum of agreement with the Navajo Nation, but it's quite old. And I'd like to have an update on it, if there's anything you with the IEC mentioned in it. Uh, this one does not. And I agree with, uh, Mr. Henneman that we have two governing bodies that are trying to tell what the IEC and the JOM are trying to do. So they need to come together, since the directive of the Navajo Nation, they should have the, say so and do the training, like Mr. Henneman said, and I agree there hardly of that situation. We need something to base ourselves on. Pass.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Manini. Uh, Mrs. Malito?
I believe, um, this meeting needs to happen. This work session needs to happen. I'm, I'm still gonna stand very firmly with that before I even look at any of the, the, I read the options of the, what the attorney has recommended. But I think a lot of this can be solved through communication and with talking things out and teaching our parents and helping them through this. Um, I think we have qualified individuals that have applied for these positions as directors and coordinators to help our parents, um, within this school district, um, instead of going to Navajo Nation. I know Navajo Nation will be willing to help, but I think that there can be some individuals that are here that have applied for this position that are qualified to teach our parents the Open Meetings Act, to review it, to sit with them, to show them the guidelines. Um, they don't need to go page for page, because, you know, I've looked at it, um, when I first became a board member. Um, but I think if he, if they can hit the highlights with the parents, I think that is what they need. I don't, and, and I, yes, if that's, the second option could be Navajo Nation. We can ask Navajo Nation, see if they can step in. That's an option, too. But I think with the two different governments that are being discussed here, it's worked for several years within our district. Yes, there are- Yes, there are changes with now the O M B circular being, but again, that's another work session that the parents need, that's another training that the parents need. Instead of them being told, "No, you can't do that," ki- just like kids, we need to be explaining to our parents, "Why? What, you know, what's going on? How come this is not happening?" When I sat in that audit meeting, it made sense at that time, and, you know, people were, um, you know, Javana told, um, Carmen asked a question, Javana said, "Yes, Paletta, we're gonna," it was dismissed, uh, dispersed throughout the, um, the staff about these new changes. Okay, now it's time to go to the parents, disperse it among the parents, and start showing our parents what changes have been made and what improvements need to be done. And I think, but that discussion hasn't happened. We're just pointing fingers, and we're getting lawyers, we're getting audit people, outside sources, when we haven't even taken the step to help them first. And we're jumping the gun. I know, as a board, we mentioned, we want to see how the funds are being spent, we've never approved a formal audit to happen internally by an outside source. Be, and what we, I don't remember doing that. I looked, that's why I look back at all the minutes, there's no vote that happened, that we said we wanted an outside source to do an, an audit on J O M. And I think we need to continue to support them, and I mentioned this at the last board meeting, I don't want people setting up this Indian education to fail. We've got too much money, it's halfway through the year, and that money's supposed to be spent, and we're just sitting on it, and now, of course, people are gonna say, "Now there's a huge rollover at the end of the year, they're not spending their money, they're not using it appropriately," and I don't want those to start. And we need to get and help these parents, how, however much they want, um, that to, for us to assist them. And their, their bylaws, I agree with the now, the, the Impact Aid, the I E C bylaws, and what our policy as the Galloway County has, need to be aligned. Uh, it needs to be in sync, I so agree with that, because there's so many things that are being miscommunicated, and I think that was stressed by, um, the I E C President in an email, that we need to continue to stop this miscommunication. And I think the only way we're gonna do that, if we sit, um, toe to toe and see what we can do to help 'em.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Malito, uh, Mr. Mitchell.
Um, I, I really think that, you know, um, even with our little, um, training session that we had prior to this meeting, we talked about parent involvement, and how important parent involvement is. And to me, our I E C committee is made up of parents, and I see that as one of our biggest, um, biggest areas where we have that parent involvement. And I honestly feel that we really need to start working with these p- our, these parents, and making sure that, um, they stay within the guidelines that they do, and that they, and we continue to have our I E C, because they are the parents, and we need that, we need their involvement, we can't, um, even think about taking that away from them. I mean, I, and I really wish that, you know, um, that our administration would work with, um, the I E C, and, you know, instead of just coming out and saying, "No, no, 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 you can't do this," and, "No youth conference, whatever," you know, I think they need to say, "This is what's going on, but this is what I can do to help make it happen." I mean, has I, have, have you, have you heard that from anybody? That, and instead of just having them being told, "No, you can't do this because of this," you know, um, I really think that we, they need to be provided the assistance. Okay, let's make it happen, and this is how we're gonna do it. So, I really think that a sit-down, like, um, Ms. Malito said, um, with the I E C, um, um, the financial department, and everybody involved, need to sit down and go over all these things, and try to, um, get things rolling, instead of holding back, holding back, holding back, 'cause that's what I see now. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mitchell, um, for your comment, suggestions there. Um, one of the first, uh, question I have is, uh, actually to one of the former I E C members, uh, Ms. Malito, um, prior to you becoming our school board member, I know you were our president for I E C, um, at that time, uh, was there ever, yeah, in the, in the bylaws, um, the need, or was there a part, portion where it stated Open Meetings Act?
No, sir.
So, one of the questions that I have, uh, this goes to the I E C, is that if the I E C weren't aware of this little portion, and it was put in by the new coordinator, you know, uh, without the consent or without the approval of the J O, or, or the I E C, would it not be, you know, a, a, a big no-no, um, to do without their consent? Um, I know, uh, one of the things that New Mexico has, uh, as a legal body, is the Open Meetings Act, and something, um, that, uh, had been used against me, um, stating the, uh, about the Open Meetings Act, uh, and I know it's, uh, it's something that, uh, FOG looks at, uh, the Foundation of Open, uh, Government, they, they look at the openness of, uh, the different bodies in New Mexico, governing bodies. Um, at the time, uh, I had heard, well, it sounds like, uh, one of the, um, public comments we've been having, I heard, but, um, I have heard that, uh, there were, um, two, two different groups, uh, working within the I E C, one group is trying to work one way, another group, um, I don't know how true that is, um, I'm not the kind of guy that would speculate along, along those lines, but, you know, if that's something that had then, had this come to, we have to find a solution on this. I know during the last meeting, I had mentioned to, uh, Ms. Johnson, um, that I was upset with the I E C, the J O M, and our, and our own district personnel, um, for, uh, letting this issue drag on this far, um, where we didn't have any kind of mediation or finding common grounds to, um, let this program go on further. And I don't know if you remember, but in October, um, I believe it was the first week of October, the second week, there was a big headline in, um, Gallup Independent about a, um, misuse of funds from the I E C. Um, and I know, following that, uh, our, uh, headline, we had mentioned there were a few board meetings that, um, if this is the case, you know, we have to, uh, look at the, look at the internal controls of the funding, the, like, an audit. At that time, it was mentioned that, um, some kind of audit would be done on the funds to look at and, and see where the misuse are, however, the local paper had, uh, addressed it in the article. Um, and I think that's where it eventually led to some kind of audit, um, to, to look at the funding. Um, but I think along those lines, uh, I do agree with, uh, my fellow board members here, that we have to have a sit-down, um, to J O M, the I E C, our, our district personnel, administrators, our superintendent, and our board members, to those who are interested in this issue. Um, it's something that's dragging us into twenty sixteen, um, and I'm one of the, um, guys that look towards the future, I don't look back at it and try to make something out of it. So, I hope we can find a solution, um, somewhere along the lines, and I know, Ms. Malito, you sho- stressed to us in the last meeting that you wanted to, uh, have a sit-down, but I just wanted to wait for this, um, uh, opinion from the attorney, uh, so I think we would like to schedule a work session along these lines, Mr. Superintendent, um, to see what we can do to find a common ground. Uh, it seems that the board is in favor of finding a solution. I know there was an opinion, uh, from their attorney to dissolve the I E C, but I don't think that's in, in our favor now. We just wanna find a common ground to make sure that we can have parental involvement, um, to have our parents involved, uh, with that. So, um, I, I do hope we do find s- a solution up soon. Uh, with that, I'd like to, uh, give it to our superintendent to have his, uh, comments and, um, questions answered.
Um, the, the last Saturday's meeting wasn't canceled because of Open Meetings Act, that was miscommunications. Um, that actually was a question I took to Board President Nez, um, coming off Mr. Henneman's email to us, on questioning, um, the lawyer sent you the information, it was pretty deep and different directions, um, and, and the question was, "Before we have a meeting, shouldn't we, as a board, um, discuss these issues and come to some determination?" 'Cause that's gonna set the direction for what we go in the work session. So, that was canceled, because, um, Mr. Nez did agree that, you know, we have, we have a lot of questions to, to answer. Um, it's, we've gone from, we are a self-sustained board, to we are a group of parents. We've gone from the attorney stating it's an advisory board to you all, because under CFR, you would be the governing board, and they would be an advisory board to you, and if they're an advisory board to you, then they're not making decisions, so then Open Meetings Act wouldn't apply. But then, if it's between, under the jurisdiction of the Navajo Tribe, but we talk to Dodi, and they say, "No, we're not the oversight, it's a contract between you, the superintendent, and the Navajo Nation, so you're the oversight." So, we've got our lawyer stating they're the oversight, we've got them saying we're the oversight, um, the question comes down to, who is the oversight? I think we do need to sit down with Dodi, and our officers on the I E C, and the school board, and your attorney, and, and come to a resolution. Who is the oversight? And if the Navajo Nation is the oversight, then any financial issues should not go towards our audit, because that affects our bond ratings, stream, and it, it's gonna be tougher this next bond to, to get those through. And then, if the Navajo Tribe is the oversight, can they commit district funds? Because we're finding, over the past years, fiscal is assuming program is doing things correctly, especially with the de minimis policy, I hope when I said that right, and now the fiscal looks at it, we haven't been. Um, you know, with de minimis, we've signed off the form, which is wonderful, it's in the bylaws, it's everything there, we have the de minimis release, everything's great. No, it's not. Because soon as you commit to something on a per-student basis, J O M can only pay for those students that have a C I B on file, and they've been paying for everybody at the event. If they provide meals for a youth conference, and only eighty percent of those kids have a C I B on file, in the past, they've been paying a hundred percent of that bill. That is misuse of federal funds. They can pay for the eighty percent of those kids, the other twenty percent has to come out of operation, and there's been no-
So, so why, why does it say in the federal regulations, sir, uh, that there is a de minimis policy in there?
There is a de minimis policy if, if the charge is, say a speaker's gonna come in, and he's gonna charge us five hundred dollars, and he doesn't care if it's twenty people or three hundred people. That's where the de minimis comes in, because it's the same rate and it's open to all. But if it's something that you're gonna pay per person, like a meal, or something like that, um, I believe it paid for some kids to go to the movies last year, well, J O M paid for some kids who did not have a C I B on file to go to that movie. J O M is a targeted fund, it can only be spent on students with a C I B. Now, the movie theater didn't say, "Well, if you bring your class, it's two hundred dollars, we don't care if it's one or," if they did that, then no problem. But when they charge per child, then the targeted, J O M can only pay for those children that the C I B is on file for in our district. Operational has to pay for the rest. That's where the de minimis, there, there's, you, you have to look at it as if it's per individual or just lump sum. Um, those are the issues we're getting into, and I'm, I'm sorry that the, uh, Cuddy Law took over thirty days to give an answer on this, um, we were hoping it'd be a week, um, they had other pressing issues. Um, but, but we're getting conflicts, and, and, you know, the sad part is, our students are in the middle of conflict, because you've gotten one interpretation saying A, and you're getting another interpretation B, we're the ones sitting in the middle saying, "We're just asking for the interpretation we wanted to write," and it's causing a conflict in the middle. Well, we need to bring everybody at the table and have them come to the, the set rules, so everybody knows how to play the game. Um, there are, I believe, within that audit, gonna be some, some findings, um, there was never findings in the past, because they never looked at that fund, um, if, if they would've, I, I don't think we would've gotten an unqualified rating, um, as we did, um, but it's something we have to, especially with the press that was put out at that time, and such as that, it, it's something that, for transparency's sake, we have to say, "Yes, we were above board," or "No, we weren't," and we need to make the corrections. That's where we're at. Um, I a hundred percent agree to the work session, um, the work session needs to have all the players at the table, um, I think if it was just the district and the I E C, we can come to an agreement that the other sides can still throw calls out. It, it needs to be all, all parties together as one. So, I do support it, we have asked Dodi to come to the table, um, I will be asking Board President Nez to ask Cuddy Law to come to the table, along with the school board, along with the I E C, and come to, come to a resolution. Um, it depends on who you talk to at Dodi. It, 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 it's amazing, we, we're on a phone call with Alice, a- and the answer's A, and, and we ask, "Can you get it in writing?" And we have it sent to us from another member up there in writing, and the answer's Z. And then, we're sitting here going, "Which one do we follow?" So, you know, we need to be at a formal table, where it's all brought out, it's all come to agreement, it's all put on solid writing, and we get back on track for our kids' sake, 'cause that's what we're doing.
Mr. Nez.
Ms. Malito.
I would like to see where, um, you're getting these, um, from the de minimis policy, I wanna see the regulation at the work session on that. Um, I wanna see where it says that we have to pay, that we can't use the de minimis policy for our other children. Um, and the other question that, one of the options that the pre- that the attorney forwarded us on this, was something that I mentioned to you two years ago, and I think Monica also mentioned a couple of times, was for us to do direct funding, for us to apply directly, um, instead of going through Navajo Nation. And at that time, everybody kept telling us, "No, no, no, it can't be done, it can't be done, you can't do that." And now, that's one of the options that we were presented to. I wanted to do that, so we wouldn't have to go through Navajo Nation, because Navajo Nation takes their own cut of the money that was supposed to be sent to our children. So, we have asked that question before, and at that time, we were given the no. And I think that now that we, that is an option, you know, that, maybe that's something that needs to be talked and discussed about again, but keeping the, the board, the, the parents as, um, the, the governing of the, the, the funds, to continue to have the I E C, um, um, the governing board for these funds for the Johnson, O'Malley. Um, I just, I just think that, as what Kevin mentioned before, parental involvement is extremely important. I mean, when, when I was reviewing the grades a little while ago, there's a section on there that even has parental involvement, that they get bonus points to having parents involved. And, and our parents right now, the comments that I'm getting and talking to them, you know, with different themes, apparent parental engagement is what they're calling it, and they don't feel wa- wanted. They feel like, people are saying, "Now you, we want you guys to go away, we'll, we'll let the, let the school board run the money, let them spend it, you guys are no use to us now." Those are the feelings that our parents are feeling right now, and that, we don't want them feeling like that, we want them to be involved, we want to have their voice, because they are the, 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 the people that, the little people- because they are the, 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 the people that, the little people in our school district that is giving us these funds, that is giving us our jobs, that are giving us, um, what we need. And right now, we need to see what we can do to help them, and the feelings that they have, they're hurt, they're really hurt that we are not supporting them. And all, I know this is going to be solved with a few, if it's, if it's a few sessions, that's what we owe them. They have given us so much to help us with our children, and I think if we can provide that assistance, and, and give them your attention. I think that's what's lacking, is people are too busy that, you know, we forget the people that are very important to our district, and we need to listen to them and see what their concerns are. And if we can get that group, that top going, you know, we're going to understand what's going on, on how to spend these funds correctly. But right now, it's not happening, and I think this work session would be very beneficial for both entities.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Melito, um, Mr. Heneman.
Thank you. Uh, in the attorney's opinion that was provided to us, I read that the IEC's current bylaws for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year, as adopted on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, do state that parliamentary procedure will be used, that's true, it's in there, da-da-da-da-da, and they will adhere to the provisions of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. This is the IEC bylaws dated March twenty-sixth, there is no mention that I can find in here of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. So I don't know where the attorney got that. And now we were told this evening that, uh, the Open Meetings Act was adopted or inserted as a revision, while we have not received any such revision. All we have, at least all I have, is this, this earlier one. So, again, this is a part of the, what we're dealing with, is keeping up, catching up, so on. But, uh, at the same time, when it comes to training, I have to say honestly, I think the IEC bylaws need some further development at some points, perhaps, for example. One of the issues that's been raised is the election of members, and how are they elected, and who do they, do they report back to the chapters, or so on. Well, this says the officers shall be elected in June. That's about all it says, it doesn't say how, who, you know, so there's some maturing in a sense, maybe. Now, uh, I've dealt with JOM committees that didn't even have bylaws, you know, now we're getting more sophisticated, and it gets more complicated. So, but I think those are things to work through. The other thing is, it used to be that school districts would get Johnson O'Malley, make an application, and get the grant, but it had to have the approval of an adjacent tribe. Now we're going through the tribe right now. I don't know if that's because Navajo Nation is saying we won't approve unless it comes through us, you know, so they have some more say than they would otherwise, or whether that's something new in JOM, I don't know, I may be behind on that. But I'm just saying, you didn't have to get, it wasn't, it didn't, the money didn't come through the tribes, and it didn't, uh, they didn't have authority other than they, they looked at your app, and it had to be acceptable to them, of course, so they, they had reason not to approve it. But the, the school district was the one who put in, so now we're dealing with a different arrangement, and I wish I knew, uh, what our options were there, and if Navajo Nation would, would go along, if that were, if that were better. I'm not saying it's better at this point, I'm just wondering if, if the school district applied directly and got the grant directly with Navajo Nation approval, if, if that's even an option to know about. But, um, anyway, those are more observations, I guess. But I, I don't understand, if the IEC minutes were revised, and what did the members say about that, and then why didn't we get a copy of the updated thing? And those are just mechanics that need to always be kept up at, kept working, yeah, to work out. Well, and the members, I mean, you know, they're, they have their own concerns, no doubt, during meetings, and it isn't these kind of mechanics necessarily, but in some way, it has to come back together.
Yeah, I, I certainly agree on that, uh, issue where, um, the changes were implemented, um, and that's why I asked our secretary here, prior to her role as school board, if this was ever on the, uh, previous policies. So it's a concern, and it's something to look into, um, somebody may have committed an oh-no on a public document, um, on this insertion of Open Meetings Act into the bylaws. Uh, but I think all in all, we have to sit down, put up a pot of coffee, and, um, put, put leaders at the table, and discuss this issue further and more. It's something that won't, uh, fix overnight, take some time, and I certainly agree, um, if we do take out the middleman from this, uh, program, the Navajo Nation, um, and, you know, apply to, uh, the grant directly, BIA to the county, um, and at that point in time, if, if I do believe legally in legality, the IEC would be subject to state law, because it'd be mandated to a state, Open Meetings Act would apply, and so forth. Um, but I think, uh, uh, we have to set this meeting up, uh, and I do agree with our superintendent that, um, we should have everyone at the table, including the Navajo Nation, and see who's right, because I, I, I know we're chasing our tail around. If you ever go out at night in, uh, you know, on reservation, you hear coyotes, you hear like five or ten coyotes screaming, really, in reality, it's like one or two coyotes in a circle, howling at one time. So, it's sort of, in that sense, what we're doing right here, so. But I, I do hope, Superintendent, that we can set this meeting up.
Um, with that, I, I need to get some dates. I do want to go on record, um, nobody in GMCS has said that our goal is to do away with the parental involvement, or do away with the IEC. That was solely Cuddy Law's interpretation and options, that came from your lawyer, and not our administration. Our administration's always said, um, we want the parental involvement, so that, I want that on record. Um, I would like to have a couple of dates, because we've got multiple players here, we need to get with Monica and her group on what dates they have available, what dates you all have available. We then have to throw DODI in the picture, Andy in the picture, so if you guys can give me multiple dates, that way I can get with Monica and get that ball rolling.
Yeah, well, I think you need to get with Cuddy Law and Andy also, because it says right here, um, that it was a request from the superintendent.
The request was, would you please give us the interpretation of who is the oversight? Um, how is it to work? That. He asked us to send him, send the CFR, send a copy of the bylaws, he then produced that document. You can talk with him. We never asked, do we have to have, do we, how do we do away with? Those are his interpretations. We asked the direct questions, who is the oversight, do we follow the Open Meetings Act, et cetera.
I think, uh, in, in, in his part as attorney, if you look at the CFR twenty-five, it does state in there that if the school board has majority, uh, they are Indian on the board, that, you know, that they have that subject to, where they would, um, be the fiscal agent of the fund, so. I think that's where it came from, the interpretation, as, as I read it. I was going to bring a copy, I did, uh, get SCFR twenty-five with me, um, and I'm not an attorney, but, um, it did say something along those lines, where, um, the CFR would, would require that. But then again, I, I think board members, what days, uh, I think after the holidays would be best. I know some of the board members will be going out to families in other areas, and, uh, we have all these ceremonies coming up, uh, myself as well. Uh, I think after the holidays, like in the first part of January or second part, it'd be up to the, to the board members, what days you have open, to possibly schedule this meeting, to give enough time to the different governing bodies to come up with their paperwork and their recommendations, so.
Yeah, I think when that happens, I think we really need to make sure that, um, each governing body comes prepared, we need to make sure we, we let them know exactly what we want, what we want to know, that way if they're not coming, and just say, well, we'll bring it, we'll get back with you, or we'll, we'll let you know what later. They, we really need to let everybody know exactly what we're going to be discussing, and they, everyone really needs to be prepared.
And a big pot of coffee, so. Um, any, any suggested days, board members?
I agree with after the holidays. Um, we have a board meeting the first Monday in January. Um, can I give you those dates then, or you want them later? I mean, uh, earlier?
I think if we said it now, we can send out the emails and letters to the, uh, the Navajo Nation's kind of hard to get to these days.
Well, I think we're in a bind, because we don't know what they have in mind when they meet with us. See, that, that, you're talking about two governing bodies, and they're hitting heads as it is. Um, Mr. Spitty, I think you should have, uh, verbal contact when they can meet, uh, in second week in January, and get back with us.
Yep, I will reach out to DODI, the IFC, IEC officers, and Cuddy Law, see if I can narrow it down to two mutual dates from those three, to present to you guys to pick one.
Yeah, I don't think you need to have a Cuddy Law firm here, we've already seen his, uh, interpretation. Uh, we just need to have the Navajo Nation meet with us, and the tribe, or whatever, who's ever responsible for these, uh, funds, Mr. Spitty.
I think even the, um, chair to the Hess Committee, um, Mr. Hale, or representative from that department, because DODI is, um, again, under the Hess Committee. The Hess Committee, um, oversees the DODI, um, department.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm available, um, the fourth through the eighth, um, right now, there's nothing really scheduled. Um, so any, I think the sooner the better. Um, like I said, that money needs to be, we need to get that money rolling, and I think we need to continue to, maybe dig in, yeah, I, I would say the fourth through the eighth would be the possible.
Mr. Heneman?
I'd just like to observe, uh, that when we had our work session on budget, um, that really didn't get completed, I think, to, you know, we didn't have the, the trainer that we expected, and we still had questions, so we still have that for a follow-up. And then, also on the one today on board goals, that was beginning of, I think, a longer discussion, we identified one or two, uh, good possibilities, but, so what I'm suggesting with that is, we have on one hand, a possible need to continue some work sessions that are shorter, be, on the Mondays before board meetings. This one could be a longer meeting, I would think, with that many parties involved, and probably between the schedules of everybody needs to be in, independent from those work sessions at another time, whether it's day or evening or whatever, but, uh, so I, I would try to be there whenever, but I, I think not on one of those times before a board meeting.
I get you. Okay. Okay, um, if we have that, with our final set, board members, uh, we do have just the next, uh, item of the agenda, future board agenda items, do we have any, uh, board members? Mr. Heneman?
Before I realized that the agenda had the report on school grades, that was one of my items, but I would like to put on the agenda a follow-up on that, um, a little bit fuller analysis, like from, on the Indian Hill, Indian Hill success, in terms of which specific things could be emulated in other schools that, that are part of the model, not necessarily just the individual, an individual principal or whoever, you can't clone them. Uh, just like a little more, I mean, that's so impressive, I'd like a little more thorough description of that. And secondly, the part I mentioned about Theru, that we really take a, a good, hard look and empathetic look at what we might support and help with there in terms of a, a bigger picture, not, um, uh, well, we know what, you know, what we're dealing with there, but in terms of, uh, uh, and not looking at the school grade as a cause of suicides or vice versa, I mean, just, there's a whole dynamic, I think, that goes on in Theru, and I've always wondered, for example, whether, how much, how much is Theru a community, a unified community, where they even think and work together? Because there's some different parts of that community, different than some of the other, uh, school areas where we have. So I think we should wrestle with that if we can, and maybe there's some people who would, would want to come to that, community members, maybe, uh, counselor kinds of people, whether they're in IHS, whether they're in, uh, so school counselors, I mean, some dimensions of that whole circumstance that, uh, along with the academic part, that might be important to hear. Um, secondly, I mean, the second item is that in the Indian policies and procedures, we keep referencing parent involvement, and this says that GMCS District's Indian Policies and Procedures shall maximize Indian participation in the development, approval, and implementation of all programs. I would like to, as an agenda item, request a report, uh, I request the superintendent to compile a report, and for, for which he'll have to draw on the principles, at least, and maybe some others, telling us exactly how the district is maximizing Indian participation in the development, approval, and implementation of all programs. Now, I realize that winter Christmas break is, is upon us, and it may not be feasible to draw that all together. I, you know, I don't know when people are here and gone between now and the next meeting. So if that needs to be put to the, the next meeting, I would understand that, but I'd like to put it into the, into the hopper for when it can be done. And then I have a third item, and, and again, what I, what I want, just know there's concrete things, not rhetoric, okay? I mean, we have a lot of things we say, but I'd like some, specific examples of how, uh, Indian parents, students, tribe, whatever, are, how that participation is, what form it's taking, what, you know, and there, I'm sure there are a lot of examples out there, it's just, I would like to know what, what's happening. The third one is a question, simply, uh, I've been thinking since I first got into this involvement officially about, we only have two meetings during the year that are not right here, and I'm wondering if we can re, revisit our meeting dates and put at least one or two more out in district, uh, school areas to, to go out there. I know it, it creates, you know, some work for staff differently than being right here next to offices and so on, but I would like us to, to look at that, uh, schedule of meeting dates and see if we couldn't, we've been to Twin Lakes, and we only have, we have Catherine Miller Elementary, and then we have a whole lot of other schools, if we could add a couple more to that schedule, at least look at that and see what the board thinks.
Mr. Heneman, I agree with you, but one of the reasons we didn't this year, as we did last year, have a lot more, we need commitment to having full boards at each of those. Every time we had a meeting in the county, we were struggling to put together a quorum, had it at Tohachi, we had it at Theru, we had it at, um, Sayagai, and we barely made a quorum. So that's one of the reasons we pulled it back into here, a lot of expense to go out and possibly not have a meeting.
So part of that discussion, I guess, on the board's part, would be not just dates, but whether we're committed to going if we do that, yeah?
If we have a commitment, we'd be happy to.
We're committed.
Thank you, Mr. Heneman, uh, Ms. Nez, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Melito.
Um, during our work session, I mentioned to the board members that were there, I went from September eighth's meeting, and I started looking at all the minutes that we had, um, to now, or to la, to last board meeting. And there are some things that we have just kind of put to the side, got put underneath the rug, um, forgotten about, and I think, I mean, they're important enough that we need to bring them back up. We've never revisited them. One of the things I requested for, and I think this is my third time requesting for it, is an update on testing. We're mid-year now, and, um, I still want to know what is the requirements, well, we know what the requirements are, but I know for graduating seniors, you know, you can use your, um, acceptance to a college, senior research, um, other options that the youth, that, that our seniors can use, and audits, graduation audits, are they being done? Have they been reminded to be done? I had the wonderful issue last year at Theru High School that I don't want to revisit again, and I think we need to continue, that was a really sad situation that happened, and I don't want to redo that. And I don't want to redo that, uh, again. And I think, um, we also requested for the union to give a report. We also wanted to, an update on the Galway-Kinney County and Western New Mexico University, um, the, the, the partnership that we had here, how's the enrollment going? How are the teachers now certified? Are they getting, there were so many things that I just kept writing and writing that we have. I can try to email this, um, it's one, two, two pages long. Um, the wellness policy, whatever happened to the energy drink? Was that implemented? Um, a, a, a copy of the Open Meetings Act. The food service that they would help do a holiday display and serve stuff. Um, we didn't get anything. There's just so much, the bilingual program, did we implement a Spanish class? Are they getting Spanish teachers? I know she was, Miss Linda Spencer was, um, requesting for those things. Um, so I, I'll, I'll email this, that what I wrote down. And I think we need to continue to do that because there's a lot of things that are missing or that we have, not missing, but we said we would revisit, but we never have. So I, I just wanna bring those men, those, those things up, Mr. President.
If you can please email those to me, um, most of those while I was not here. And can't answer to those unless I know about them. So if you can get those to me and email, I will add them to the list. I'm making it a point to work with Mr. Heneman especially, since he usually has the biggest.
Mr. President, may I comment on one of those items, Priscilla? On the wellness policy, what happened is the committee that met was really supportive of our concern and direction. And they ran out of time in their meeting in terms of making a formal recommendation. And I have, uh, talked with Mr. Chiopetti about, I think they're to have a meeting in January again. And then hopefully they can formalize that thing and back to us. We could do it without them and dictate it, but I mean, they were really into that same idea. And so, um, I don't see any harm in putting it on the agenda. But I'm thinking for that committee to reconvene and follow through, because they, they had a long agenda. I took part of the time promoting this, uh, energy drink ban. And, uh, so I think they intended to, you know, to implement that, recommend it. So we can put it on the agenda and then, meantime, we'll probably find out when their actual next meeting is to be. But I think it's in January.
Thank you, Mr. Heneman. Uh, Mr. Mitchell? I think, um, as, as you had stated, uh, board members, um, be stressed to, uh, have meetings out in our district schools. Um, you know, that's where we have to commit, commitment. Um, and then too, our board members have a lot of, uh, um, things for the agenda. You know, uh, when we have a full agenda, we go, the latest thing we went to was like eleven o'clock. Um, I think, uh, one of the solution we need to work with is having a work session prior to our regular board meeting. So a lot of these issues can be addressed during those work sessions, uh, so that we, it can accommodate, um, you know, for the, uh, official business of the board to take, to take care of the consent, consent agenda items and certain action items that need to be approved. Uh, a lot of these issues that we have brought up would certainly go into having a, a work session. Um, or how is it they have a center consolidated where they have a lot of their, um, reports and, um, updates, uh, listed under their work sessions. I think somewhere along those lines you would need. That way, at that point in time, you could have the direct communication with, um, district personnel on that point. Um, the, the only one that I'm, I'm bringing up here this evening, um, you know, annually, we do do our superintendent evaluation, um, annually. I know we do in February, but I would still like to move it up to January. Um, I, I believe we, we, we have one meeting where we do the superintendent evaluation. Uh, that's coming up. Um, I know, uh, the, our board attorney did say, um, to have immediately, but I, uh, kinda pushed it into January only because we have all these things that came up. And, you know, we had, uh, some, uh, um, uh, contests to the board, um, regards, you know, to, uh, legal issues that we faced. So I think we can, uh, finally put, say we finished that and that's all over and done with. And now we're moving on to govern this district. So I think in January would be a good time, sometime in January, uh, maybe the second board meeting to schedule, uh, um, superintendent evaluation, um, at that point in time. That's only just a heads up now, for now. Um, and then I think at that time, uh, actually, I think next board meeting, I'd like to have, I'll go ahead and introduce, uh, as I said in the last meeting, that we, I want to establish some committees under the board, advisory committees. Um, I will bring that up, um, and hopefully have the documentation by then and get our board attorney to make sure that we don't conflict any, uh, policies already in place with the district. So, uh, I think with that, uh, I'm certainly open to having the meetings out in the county schools. Um, then again, I just look at the idea of having our board room here, um, where we have a lovely boardroom and a lovely setup with our new, um, live streaming. So I, I kinda look at those kinda things as well, um, sitting here, so. Um, and it's kinda hard at times when you meet in the gym and some of the parents can't hear what we're saying, so. Um, but that's just something that I'd like to bring up. I think, uh, Ms. Melito had another question.
Um, yeah, we got an email from, um, uh, the coordinator to the New Mexico Association. Joe, Joe, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. Um, about the, um, Mr. Barack Obama signing the, um, oh, now I forgot the E.
E, yes, yeah.
Yeah, would, would, could we get some kind of information on that, that we can? Um, I know it's something that was, that, they say we get, you know, the, the, we have more control, um, at the, well, they say local level, but at state level. Um, and I just wanted to get more information on that, please.
The Student Success Act, the one they repealed, the, what's all that behind? Okay.
Oh, oh, oh.
Okay, well, that, yeah, I sort of read up on it, but I didn't get the whole chance to read the whole act, so. Okay, we'll put that in there as well. Okay, with that, board members, I, uh, we're down to our last item of the agenda, adjournment. Do I have an adjournment motion?
Um, I'd just like to say thank you. I know it's been a long, long evening, we're leaving here at nine. I know we've been here later, but I think a lot of positive things came out of this. And thank you, board members, thank you to the community that's still sitting with us and the staff. Um, these are very important issues that we have for our children and, you know, some of the sacrifices that we make. And as Mr. Um, Nez has mentioned before, you know, you know, we, we, you know, we're not on the clock here, we don't get paid for this. But, you know, I'm very thankful that we do get a reward in a different way. And it's a more meaningful reward for me. And, you know, thank you very much, board members and the community for, um, being here with us tonight. Yeah.
Thank you.
Not to prolong it longer, but you prompt me, um, you know, when I was raised as a kid, I mean, I was, wasn't full grown yet. And I was supposed to do what I was supposed to do. And my parents, if I did something wrong, they told me if I did something right, that was taken for granted because that's what I was supposed to do. And I, that habit sorta carries over and is a weakness because I don't always accentuate the positive. I pick out what I think needs to be fixed or whatever. But I appreciate your example, Priscilla, and, uh, even the people staying this, this long this evening. I think deserve thanks. And, uh, I, I have to learn from that in terms of, uh, sometimes even with the report cards thing. You know, I'm still wanting to get another step up the hill when we are going. But, uh, anyway, thank you and Merry Christmas. Have a blessed Christmas and a happy two thousand sixteen. We'll see you then.
Yeah, I'm sorry for having to mention that. I've just been very overworked in the last couple of days. But, uh, we have Merry Christmas to all our board members. I hope you guys have a safe and a wonderful Christmas with all your family members. Um, yate keshmish to our Navajos and feliz Navidad. So, thank you very much. Uh, with that, uh, Mr. Menini?
With that, I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Menini. Roll call, please.
Mr. Heneman?
Yes.
Yes, and Merry Christmas.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you and have a safe drive home.